Working on it now.
Okay.
There we go. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Everyone's risen, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Do I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, great, okay, great. We have, anybody, no closed session, no public comments for closed session, anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we have two Zoom participants.
Great.
We have no raised hands, so I'm speaking to our attendees on Zoom. Please raise your hand now if you'd like to make public comment on our closed session items number one and two on the agenda. I'll give you just a few seconds here before we move on. And we do have one raised hand, Mayor, from Luke.
Okay.
Luke, you have the ability to speak now, and you have the floor.
Oh, nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you for your raised hand. Mayor, that's all.
Okay, great, we will move into the closed session, thank you. Are we ready for Taylor?
Yes, let me go check on our city attorney.
Okay. Yep, sure. Okay. All right, we are coming out of the closed session, and Mr. Harvey, would you please give us a report out of the closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, as a follow-up to a closed session, I believe it was, I think it was almost two months ago, the city council met in closed session to review the five submittals that were received in response to the city's RFQ process for city attorney. The city council reviewed and deliberated those submittals received and directed staff to bring back two of the five for near-term closed-session interviews for those firms. A summary of those firms from whom submittals were received, as well as the firms that were selected for closed-session interview, will be released next week. I think I've caught everything.
I think you did.
Although the mayor pro tem has a look on her face like maybe I said something incorrectly.
There's a tsunami warning.
Oh, okay, all right.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Alaska, Hawaii.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Okay, that will be the ending of the closed session, and now we will resume with the open session. All right, wonderful. So, Mr. Montgomery, roll call, please.
Well, Mayor, we have a single agenda tonight, so it's not necessary.
Wonderful.
We can continue with our item.
Let's continue, great. Okay, so we'll move on to the open session. The council member requests for a review, proposal, review of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council and options for fire hardening and wildfire safety and risk mitigation services. I'm not sure who's beginning. Mr. Harvey?
Sure, I can, I can start things off, and then I will probably hand things over to the members themselves, but, yes, we're, we're here this evening, it's a two-member city council request, Mayor Pro Tem and council member Rule, who came to me and, and made a request for an agenda report that simply asked for a review of the proposal received from the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council and a discussion as to how the city may achieve either through that proposal or potential alternate means, a means towards its fire-related goals and tactics. And so, the proposal from the Fire Safe Council is attached to the agenda report. I know that there's a number of folks here that want to talk about that, and I think that's really just mostly all I need to say before handing it over to the mayor pro tem and the council member if they want to add anything further before you take it out to public comment.
And we have a presentation from the Fire Safe Council.
Yes, we do, sorry, thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Yep, so I, I can start, and then I'll let you, council member Rule. So, this all came up for a review because I wanted to look at a couple, a couple of things. First of all, I was aware that the process that we went forward with in entering into the proposal was different than anything else that we've gone into a, into a, into, like, we haven't done anything like this before. And what happened was the Fire Safe Council presented us with a proposal, and the directive didn't come from us and from our goals and, and priorities that we had established in our fire, in, in our overall conversation about goals and priorities. And then the other thing that was happening was I was hearing from other organizations who are working in fire, they were asking for clarification, there were conversations about other organizations wanting funding for certain things, and this is all, this is all part, taking place within the CAL FIRE grant process, and so, I wasn't aware that there were competitive aspects to this, too, where partnerships with cities would make one group more of a candidate for CAL FIRE grants than others, and I didn't want to slight anyone. And, and so, my thought in bringing this back is to have a more thorough discussion about what we as a city want to do with fire, and to create a process for this. I ideally want us to talk about a mo, how do we look at fire in a more concerted way every year, not just this year? And we don't even have a fire budget right now. The budget for this proposal was coming out of the general fund, out of what we consider our delta, and if this is something that we are going to take seriously, and I think we should take seriously, I want to start back at the drawing board, come up with a process, create a budget line item, look at implementing the Traffic and Safety Commission that we've talked about implementing, put fire underneath that, so that we're not just responding to ideas and suggestions that are coming to us, so that we, as a city, are taking ownership of our role in fire prevention, education, and fire readiness. And, you know, I was also, became aware of all the other organizations that are already doing the work, and when I voted yes on this, I wasn't aware of how much was already being done, and I, like many people, was afraid that we're not doing enough, and arguably we aren't doing enough. But there is a lot that's happening and a lot of really good work. So, my desire for bringing this back was to look at city, at creating city oversight, coming up with a strategic vision, and ultimately looking at more transparency in how these public funds are going to be used, because I was also made aware that there were some concerns in the contract negotiation process with having deliverables, having, having the funds that we're using be spoken for in really tangible ways, and so, it's, and so I wanted us to talk about this, I wanted us to, to revisit this as an overall topic of conversation, and ultimately, I want to go further with fire than, than we have been, and I want to make this a starting point of mu, many more conversations around what we can do for, for one of the most existential threats that we face in our community.
Ms. Rule?
Yes, so, when council member Mayor Pro Tem Lang and I discussed this, there were a lot of questions, so I agreed that we should reconsider some of, some of these questions. There were a lot of questions that came up. I feel like I have reconsidered them. I have, and, and we've come to different conclusions, and that will be part of the discussion, so I have, I have come, all of the questions that, that Mayor Pro Tem has brought forward, I have resolved in my mind through discussions with the other groups, through finding out how pervasive, you know, these, these, you know, sort of chatter in the street really was, and I came to a different conclusion, and so, we will discuss that, and, but, but we worked very well, it was very good to bring this back and to actually work through it and discuss it and figure out what our next best step. So, when we get into council discussion, I, I would like to make my comments then.
Okay.
But other than that, I, I just wanted to, there were legitimate questions to be asked, I think those questions were answered, and I'm happy to address the questions that I thought came up and how I thought they were answered, and so that's what I'm looking forward to doing after, of course, hearing from the public.
Yeah. So, would the appropriate step be have the Fire Safe Council presentation and then go to public comment?
I believe so, Mayor, that probably makes sense.
That sounds good, does anybody, sound good, anybody? Okay. Please, thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity to present for the Fire Safe Council. I am Will Castagna, the board chair of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. You see up here a list of some of the folks that we work with, this is, is kind of our core group, and I'm going to try and move as quickly as I can because I know we're limited on time, so I want to jump to the next slide and talk about why we're here today. We, as you all know, face extreme wildfire risks, and part of it that we don't think about often is the urban conflagration possibility. We got lucky in the Thomas Fire. It's, the wildfire burns in the wild, that's why they call it wildfire, but those embers fly for two to three miles from the fire front, and all of Ojai, as you'll see from the maps that will show, is in that ember zone. So, we have the potential for having the same thing happen to us as happened in paradise, as happened in the Palisades, and that's one of the reasons that we're making our proposal. Community-led wildfire prevention measures are the proven solution. We've been at this for 25 years here in the Ojai Valley. We spent two years leading a process to create what's called a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP, both of those are a little bit of a mouthful, but we firmly believe that now is the time to act. I'll, I'll tell you more about the CWPP in a moment, if you could go to the next slide. We've got a very dense urban core here on the valley floor, and that, and, and as you can see from the map, ember exposure is everywhere. There's no place that isn't either in a high or extreme fire danger zone. Ojai has the distinction of ranking in the top 1% nationally for wildfire vulnerability. 94% of the valley is classified as very high fire hazard severity. Interesting fact, 90% of structural ignitions that happen, for example, on the valley floor in neighborhoods, come from embers that fly in from elsewhere. The, the danger is in the homes themselves, the buildings becoming fuel that then carries the fire further into the community. Next slide, please. We have wetter-than-normal and drier-than-normal weather patterns emerging. What happens is that it rains a lot, and then everything grows, and then it stops raining, and everything dies. Those flashy fuels are what create the risk and the danger. Next slide, please. So, the Eaton and Palisades conflagrations are a warning for us. What we take away from this is that prevention is really essential. What we know is that it's way more expensive to clean up. Fifty-some-odd billion dollars of damage, not including the long-term economic damage that is, is happening in the Palisades. So, it also creates an insurance crisis. If, if we're all in a very, very high fire zone, we've got, you know, who's going to insure us? We've had a lot of people that have had their insurance pulled. We are attempting to address this, we're beginning to address this, we've already had a workshop, we're planning more, we're also working on creating fire-wise communities, we've already done five of those, our proposal includes more of that activity, so we intend to address these issues. Next slide, please. So, good on you, all of you, you recognize this is an important issue, and we're here talking about it, and I'm, again, grateful for the opportunity to do so with you. Earlier, just last month, this became a priority for the city council. In 2020, wildfire safety was prioritized in the sense that Measure C was passed, and money was, we began to set aside money for wildfire protection, among other things. Our city manager has identified the Fire Safe Council as a unique organization that has the ability to address these challenges, and our proposal, everything that we do, but specifically our proposal, matches the requirements that were listed in the city's list of priorities. So, there's, there's a, a direct correspondence, we're addressing the issues that you have identified as issues that, that need to be addressed. Next slide, please. Again, it's more cost-effective to prevent than to fight fires and then recover from them afterwards. So, we focus on a lot of things, I'm not going to read all of these, but we've, again, we've been at this for 25 years, we've done home hardening, house-out defensible space, community education, we've done neighborhood by neighborhood presentations, we've gone into schools, we've, we've, we've created a collaborative so that all of the local organizations are working together to bring as much money as we can as a group with predetermined division of those funds to go to the organizations within that group that, that especially focus on the, on the aspects of the project that need to be completed. So, it's a way to reduce competition for the dwindling number of dollars that are coming into the community from these kinds of projects. We've, we've done, you, you've probably seen the goats and the sheep. Right now, we're up at Villanova doing some grazing, prescribed grazing is one of the aspects that, that is a lot of fun because everybody loves the baby goats, that's one of the things that we do. We're also building community resilience centers, critical locations for community to evacuate if we need to, but functional locations for other community activities. Next slide, please. I, I'll point out that, that we spent, so, we're going to talk about the CWPP now. This is the most comprehensive wildfire analysis ever done in the Ojai Valley. This was a two-year project, the city, again, thank you very much, provided $50,000 for us to begin the process, we leveraged those funds into a $1.2 million project that we took two years to go through and invite everyone who's got any interest whatsoever in wildfire safety. We sat around the table, and we didn't just sit around the table one day and say, gee, what do you guys think we should do for wildfire safety? Before we jump to the next slide, I want, want you to look at the right-hand side. The core working group for this project was every single agency and organization that we could get to cooperate with us, and it's all the key organizations that are the experts, the, the, the brain trust in, in our community and, and in our county for what we need to do to keep our city and our county safe from wildfire. On the next slide, you'll see, can we go to the next slide? Thank you. You'll see that this CWPP process is not a one-and-done thing. It's, it's a lengthy process, I won't read the whole thing, you can study it, of course, I'm sure we'll make this presentation available, but it's a lengthy process that included four community public workshops that we advertised and invited people to come, sit down with us, tell us what you think is important, let's talk about it, let's ask the experts, and, and together, we came up with the CWPP itself, and, and all those organizations that were listed on the other page, they signed off on it and said, yes, this is the definitive document, so now we have it. We have our roadmap, we have our instruction manual, what do we need to do to keep the Ojai Valley safe? What do we need to do to keep the city safe? It's right there. Next slide, please. So, let's talk about our proposal. Again, a, a lot of aspects to our proposal, there's, there's a lot in the CWPP, and I will tell you that our proposal doesn't address everything that's in the CWPP. This is a one-year project, and, and obviously, keeping the valley safe is an ongoing project, as you pointed out, so, so this is what we, what's in the proposal is what we feel we can get done in a year. We're doing community outreach, we're doing wildfire risk mitigation, emergency preparedness, assisting the city as requested with planning and policy, and doing some capacity building. We'll be reporting back to the city on a monthly basis and, and showing up here to do quarterly reports so that everybody is fully aware of what we're doing and how we're doing and which boxes we've checked, and that we're doing what we said we'd be doing. Next slide, please. So, this is really important to, to understand more about the council itself. The, the yellow area is the Ojai area, and of course, the city of Ojai is right in the middle of that. It's important to understand that we're working, and the CWPP addresses everything around this, and we're working, we have $2 million of other projects that we're currently working with to do things called beacon boxes for firefighters that come into town that don't, don't, don't know our area, fuel reduction projects, prescribed grazing, grazing over at Villanova, the temporary refuge areas, all of this we're doing outside of the yellow zone, but of direct benefit to the city. The beacon boxes actually will be within the city, not all of them, but some of them will be in the city, but all of these things are of direct benefit to the city at no cost, no cost whatsoever. Next slide, please. So, talking about cost, what will this cost? So, there's the, the number at the top for, $483,000 is our proposal, that divides out to $36,000 a month approximately. Oh.
Which is number two.
Yeah, yeah, check me on the math, thank you very much.
No worries.
This guy does math in his head, I love that.
That's okay.
But if you do the math, you'll figure out that we're at approximately $67 per resident for a full year of the, our undivided attention on helping to keep the city of Ojai safe from wildfire. Next slide, please. So, this slide is our superpower, partnerships, relationships, cooperative arrangements with all of these organizations. These are the groups that we have partnered with over the 25 years that we've been doing this work. I, I can't tell you how much more powerful our organization is as a result of the creation of these partnerships. We're, right now, what I would consider the Swiss Army knife of wildfire safety in Ventura County, in the Ojai Valley, and certainly in the city of Ojai. Whatever needs to get done, we partner with, we don't have any chainsaws, we don't have any goats, but we know the people that do, and, and we, we bring them to the table when required for the specifics of projects that need to be done on a project-by-project basis. This is our greatest strength, we're very proud of it. Next slide, please. So, a few things to think about, we know that community-led efforts are the most effective. Every grant that we've ever applied for, one of the things that they want to know right up front is, does your community support you, or is this some harebrained idea that you just came up with? So, they require match funding. We, we have to get sometimes 50%, but mostly now 100%, and sometimes even 150% match funding for the projects that we apply for. That shows the community supports what it is we're doing. We, we carry sort of the, the long-term view and, and the long-term history of where we've been. We've been through six or seven different city councils, I've lost count, but we, we carry that institutional knowledge with us, and we feel can provide the city council with excellent advice as a result of having that long view. Do we have the money to do this? That's not our call. Ben was kind enough to provide us with a memo that lined out how much money the city has, whether our proposal, we, we just did a little math, and Mayor, check me on this, but I think we're just over 2% of the, the, the funds, our proposal total is about 2.3% of the funding that's available to, at, at your disposal and at your discretion. And again, that $67 per, per city of Ojai resident is a bargain at twice the price. Next slide, please. So, a, a possible path forward, fund the proposal as written, and let us get to work. That's our, that's our first choice. We've, we've got a proposal on the table, we're ready to go, we want to get working, and we're ready, willing, and able to do so right now. In the meantime, we've, we've heard you, there are concerns, you want to look more carefully into things, that's going to take time, and, and we want to get started now and do all that other stuff while we're already working on helping to build the wildfire safety and resiliency that this community needs. So, allocate an annual budget, decide what you want to do, we know that's important, so that, so that we, the, the council knows and the, and the city knows what it needs to expect in terms of ongoing expense. I, I'm very excited that the city is aware now, finally, and taking action, to have that conversation and decide on that amount. So, whatever that is, that can go to additional projects. You'll notice that the things in our proposal are things that either we and we alone can do, or things that our partners that we've already arranged to work with can do, but there's things outside of that that you might decide are important to do, and so, talk about those things, create RFPs, put them out there, we may bid on some, but we welcome anyone and everyone who wants to help create safety from wildfire in the city of Ojai. Next slide. Thank you.
Can, would, would you mind a couple of questions?
Yes, please.
So, we all and the public received a lot of written comments, and so, for example, we see an advocacy from the crew and the land conservancy, and even the regional Fire Safe Council, and several former fire chiefs, including Mr. Roper. So, I'm assuming these are all people that you feel completely comfortable, you're actively working with, and they would be, in like the crew's case, for example, they would be a subcontractor for you to supply these services, is what I heard.
Yes, absolutely, just to, just to clarify that particular point, we have four, I think, Chris, four projects in the offing. projects in the offering for, for the crew for slightly over $200,000, uh, that are not active right now, but, but coming. We've got the money, we've won the grants, we've contracted with them, we're ready to go. So yes, we, we work with them. We have worked with them since 2002. Um, and, and the land conservancy, all these other organizations, we, we love to partner because they, like I said, we don't have any chainsaws. Crew's got plenty of them and they're very good at what they do.
I think hearing from them directly was helpful. It was helpful for me to hear some of those details. And then my last two questions before I turn it over to my colleagues. In looking at the CWPP again, I did see a couple of things that I'm, I'm going to give you guys some more detailed questions at another time, but a couple of questions I had, you might know this, you might not, but the existing fuel treatments was one of your charts and you brought up the goats. So I see this sort of proposed grazing and a lot of other proposals. So I'm imagining at some point is what you're going to be offering, something very public where people could be looking at all of the things happening valleywide and what the progress is from the CWPP is what I'm, when I look at the dashboard and things like that that you're proposing, I think that's one of the missing pieces potentially is people can say where are we at on these projects? So is that something that's in your queue, citywide and beyond? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Let me, let me just wait because I don't want to complicate the issue. I just noticed that you have dozens of pages in the CWPP about very, um, clear descriptions of particular places and community-wide. And I feel like that just has to be promulgated for everybody to understand in a way that's clear and concise. So, um, but I don't want to complicate things right now.
Yes, Chris.
You'll have to come up, but, but don't take too long. Just, I, I, I'm only trying to say it's part of what we're wanting as a city as well, but as a county too.
Hi, I'm Christopher Dash, the executive director of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council to respond to your question, Mayor Gilman. Uh, one thing is that we have in our digital dashboard, which contains the same risk maps that are in the CWPP and all the other stuff that, that backs that document. We, you know, if you look at our proposal, you'll see that there's always a digital dashboard integration in there. That's what keeps all this current. Okay, that takes contracted time to do that, uh, but it allows us to keep track of projects that are happening, what the progress is. Furthermore, as part of the Ventura County Wildfire Collaborative, of which Ventura Regional is here, uh, as one of the other founding members of that, we're currently working under a grant from the state coastal conservancy to do what's called a regio, regional project prioritization plan or RPP. That's countywide, but divided into our various areas that we're responsible under the collaborative, which covers the entire county. That, that will be a dashboard that has all the projects that's listed in our CWPP and what's happening and their status. There'll be geospatial information you can click on and then it'll be a description of what, what it is, what's the funding, when's it going, what stage is it in? And that is, and if you want to look at what that might look like, go to Santa Barbara Fire Safe Council's.
Okay.
It's very complete, but that's what we're aiming for. That's an example of workouts way outside this proposal that will begin to educate people about where we are in this web of projects going on.
I appreciate that. Let me, let me go to my colleagues for questions before public comments, please.
So I have a question. So, uh, in one of your slides, you mentioned all the things that the Fire Safe Council is currently doing and has been doing. Um, and some of those things were included in the proposal. So I'm checking to see, did you have funding sources that have dried up and now you need the city's funding for some of these things? Or are these things that are going with, that would continue to go on as a part of a different grant from a different granting organization that the, that the city would be double paying for?
How much time do you have for me to answer that question? It's, it's kind of a complicated question because, because the, the way our grant process works is, um, we identify a project, we prepare a proposal in response to, to an RFP or a, or a publication, and then we submit to see if we can get the, the funds. If we get those funds, uh, then a lot of times we wait and we wait and we wait. And then finally, the first check arrives and we can begin our work. So we do and we, and, and so we work and, and all of these projects are well-defined in advance. In order to submit, you have to say how you're going to spend every nickel through the whole six or eight quarters of the length of the proposal. So it's very specific and any variance beyond 10% has to be approved and, you know, changes and so forth. So that's how an individual project happens. So we're working on certain projects now. Those applications were submitted two, sometimes three years ago. Uh, the, the funding, some of it has arrived, some of it hasn't. You know, that's a perennial issue that we face. So, so there are projects that we're currently working on and Chris can speak very eloquently to, to all of that. There are projects that we hope to be working on and there are projects that of course we are in the final stages or, or have even completed now. Um, so there's, if you look at our sort of project flow chart, they overlap all the time. So it's, it's, it's hard to answer your questions specifically, um, but, but again, Chris can speak, uh, to the, to the detail of, oh, there he is. Okay.
Well, to further answer the question, so we have these grant-specific projects, but one of the things and what, and we're not double dipping, we're not having twice pay. What is hard with grants is that long-term consistent planning and reiteration and, and execution is very difficult in just simply being in the grant world. You get some, you don't get some. You get one, you'll wait. Costs go up. These things happen, but what we need, what every community needs is a partnership that allows for the sort of this base funding that allows these plans to continue to evolve. It's a lot of nuance, a lot of complexity, and that's what we're looking for in a partnership from the city. The grants are just money on top of that to go do other things because tree removal is in the millions of dollars, right? We're not asking, you know, the city to pay for that, but by giving us what we need to, what's outlined in the proposal allows us to greatly leverage our ability to go get that money, just like we took your 50,000 and made it 1.2. That's the same thing we're going to do over and over again. So, but that sort of continuous funding allows for consistent, over time, planning to go that isn't interrupted by not getting the grant. If you depend on that for your long-term efforts, it's very difficult to sustain that for the years you have to do it. And what this proposal is looking is how do we sustain ourselves, uh, and do this work that isn't neatly fit into a grant that we may or may not get? The grants are going to be on top of this.
Thank you.
Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Feel free, yeah, I'll have other people come up now. Thanks very much for that presentation.
Thank you for your time.
We may, we may call back if something comes up. Let me start with Randy Coggan, then Brian Akins, and then, I know, what we want to do is, I know it's clapping is so exciting to do, but if you can't, just do something silent so we can stay on track. Brian Akins and then Bob O'Connor. Mr. Coggan, please.
Randy Coggan, board member of the Fire Safe Council. I'd like to read into the record an abbreviated summary of the letter we sent to the city, city attorney Anderson and the council on July 18th. On July 14th, at the request of the city attorney, we submitted a detailed breakdown of our use of funds stated in our proposal and requested revised draft PSA. City subsequently suspended further negotiation pending the results of tonight's special meeting. Our proposal is synergistic, integrated, and a capital efficient plan designed for efficient use of funds. It cannot have parts removed and still have the remaining pieces accomplished for a proportionally reduced price. Therefore, if we aren't going to proceed as originally approved, we must conditionally withdraw our current proposal, including the use of funding detail provided separately. We're particularly pained to make this decision because of the urgency we feel this work demands. We could already be working on our deliverables, but now must wait for committee to be formed, a revisit of our, of our already approved proposal, review changes proposed, further negotiations, which will take months. As stated, this proposal submitted is based on the CWPP adopted by the city in September 2024 and was the result of a 1.2 million dollar, two-year-long project prepared with advertised public community meetings and input from leading wildfire safety agencies and experts. It provides a comprehensive strategic roadmap for wildfire safety projects in the Ojai Valley, including the city. Now the council wishes to create an ad hoc committee to attempt to hastily recreate the work already done under the CWPP. Some suggest the city contracts directly for brush removal to begin in a matter of days. This creates the appearance of quick action, but it isn't the strategic approach required to cost effectively hard in the city. All work needs to be strategic to have the greatest impact on overall safety while minimizing costs. Our proposal does that. Our organization has operated in good faith and physical integrity for a quarter of century in the Ojai Valley, obtaining and managing over $8 million in funding, completing every project undertaken on time within budget and meeting all deliverables. If the council proceeds with our proposals previously approved, we will complete negotiating the PSA with our suggested revisions and begin our work. The city could still contract with other parties outside the scope of our deliverables and we would welcome and collaborate with any such initiatives. If the city council instead chooses to proceed on a different path, we're open to receiving and reviewing any new RFP that the city publishes relating to wildfire safety. Sincerely, William D. Castagna, board chairman, on behalf of the entire board of the Ojai Fire, Fire, Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. If anyone desires a complete copy of the letter, I have copies with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coggan. I appreciate it. Uh, Brian Akins and then Bob O'Connor and then Matei Blacklock.
So Brian Akins, I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I am the liaison to the Green Coalition. I started going at the Green Coalition, uh, many, many years ago when they started, uh, when they had the purview to go out and to, to develop this property. And so I joined the Green Coalition to basically point out the areas that were landmark city hall, tennis courts, uh, the stables over there and to, uh, help them in maintaining this property and what they could do, how they could repurpose tho, those places. And it's worked out great. Very much appreciate Kathy and the Green Coalition. They've done a fabulous job, but, uh, one of the areas that intersects with this that I'm going to talk about is our own backyard. That would be everything right outside, aside the doors. If you haven't washed, uh, walked them, beautiful in the morning, lots of brush, lots of plants and lots of very tall trees, which will turn into matchsticks. And so, uh, a little bit disappointing that Stewart Canyon didn't show up until page 22 of the report. Check that. And that's right outside here. Um, very concerned about, uh, this area being, uh, attention being given to it as quickly as we can because again, it could tend to be, uh, a matchstick. You know, where did the fire start? Where did it get worse? Oh, it was right behind city hall right before it burned it down. So don't want that to happen. Don't want that headline to show up. Um, very, uh, careful with those parts. Um, I do want to point out that, uh, our beautiful city hall is known as one of the most unique and beautiful government office buildings in the state of California. Think about that, hey? And that's why we want to keep it just like it is. We have another commissioner, I know, that's talked to you about that and, uh, we kind of talk about that and coordinate going to meetings that are outside of the HPC just to, to stay with those things. So again, uh, I've attended multiple meetings with the Fire Safe Council, including one la, last week. Um, very pleased with what they're doing. Uh, we talk about this often at the Brown Bag that the mayor has and very happy with how they're moving forward. And again, just want to get, um, move Stewart Canyon up to a few more pages in the report. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. Bob O'Connor, Matei Blacklock, and then Stephen Watson.
Uh, good evening. I've lived here since 1979. I've never attended a city council meeting before, so this is first for me.
Welcome.
Thank you. I feel I represent the dozens of homeowners whose insurance was canceled this year. And so I have no insurance. My life savings is tied up in my house. When this fire comes and one's coming, I'm sure my life savings go poof. And as you said, this is an existential threat, not just for the city, but for folks like me. I was delighted therefore, when I read that you folks had voted three to two to approve this proposal. That was smart, that was good. They are Ojai. They live here. They've lived here and they've done everything they could here to make Ojai a safe place and they know what they're doing. And you can tell from the chart that Mr. Will Castagna put up there, they have all these associations that they bring with them. They walk into the room, they're Babe Ruth, but they got the New York Yankees all around them as well. Um, I'm sure you would not have voted to accept it by a three to two vote unless it made sense. And so I'll, why all of a sudden does it not make sense? Why would you want to study it? To go back to the New York Yankees, if Babe Ruth calls me on the phone and says, I want to join your team, I'm not going to meet with the guys in the dugout and say, hey, Babe Ruth wants to join our team. Let's form a subcommittee and see if he's good enough to play for. Let's study this. Let's think about it. In the meantime, the season's going by, we're going to lose the pennant. This is not the theory of relativity. This is fire problems in Ojai. These are fire problems that we know about. We live it. We've studied it. You've studied it. You know what you're up to. Um, their proposal, as I understand it, addresses the issues you identified that need to be addressed. If not now, when? And if it's not now, then we got a fire that's maybe coming this fall and boom, poof, my house goes, I lose everything. A lot of people in my shoes don't want you to wait, don't want you to have another bunch of subcommittees and studies and that sort of thing. Um, and if not the Ojai Fire Safety Council, then who? Who could be better than this council? I was very impressed by what I saw. How could you not be in all the associations they have? They're the Babe Ruth of fire safety and they're offering to do something for you at a small price. It's 485,000, but they turned 50,000 into 1.2 million. They'll probably turn 485,000 into God knows how many millions. Um, at lunch I was asking somebody, what is actually, does the city council do? What does the city do for us? Well, they cut weeds, they take care of Libby Park, they make sure teenagers aren't drinking in Sarzadi Park, that sort of thing. And they do something for our, our fire safety, right? But if, if there's a kid drinking in the park, we gotta avoid that for a while. That's not going to be the end of the world. If there's some weeds going in Sarzadi Park, that's not going to be the end of the world. But if you don't do something to protect us from fires, then that's the most important thing you exist for, the city council, the city. It's the best thing you could do for me and other people in the community. So I would urge that you fund the proposal as written. Don't keep studying something that doesn't need to be studied. Babe Ruth has showed up and said, I want to join your team. Hire him.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Matei Blacklock, Stephen Watson, and Renee Roth.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, glad to be up here again with such an awesome crew. And I've been working with the Ojai Fire Safe Council on their community resilience center plans for Ojai, the upper Ojai one and the one planned for the Honor Farm, West Campus, where help of Ojai and other nonprofits are stationed. And it has been amazing to see the connections that many of these humans behind me have made in this community throughout their entire lifetime. Recently after the Altadena fires, I went to Altadena and opened up mutual aid distribution centers with local Ojai residents who used to run, uh, community garden there. And what we saw firsthand was that it's those community connections, knowing the people in your community that really makes a difference. There were these massive aid distribution centers funded from out of state, funded with donations, and it was just sitting there, not being used. People didn't have the relationships to bring in the right neighbors to go get that aid. So our little garage that we cleaned out, emptied out a family's garage and accepted donations, was turning over our donation supply day after day because those residents lived there and they knew the people in the community. That's what it takes. I had to look up the history of Fire Safe Councils coming from New York, moving here just under two years ago, and it started in the 60s. This has been a program that, that has been around longer than I've been alive to develop these nonprofit entities that are focused on this collaborative approach for fire safety. It is absolutely critical. The same day I found out about the proposal not being fully approved, I also found out that there was a $100,000 artist grant for the city of Ojai. I was stoked. I'm sending it to all my artist friends in town, but at the same time, I'm like, is art one-fifth of the importance of fire safety? This $20 million surplus budget, the delta that Ojai has, is nothing in comparison to what would need to be spent in the case of a major fire. There are more fires coming. The landscape is drying out. Santa Ana winds are getting more severe. We need to try to harden every single home in this community. I could talk more about how with natural building, but I'll save that for a further meeting, uh, which I hope we can have. This is the right team to help reach out in the community, to bring the people into the room, to bring the crew with the chainsaws, yes, that crew and others, to bring in the goats and to go out there, and you all have the opportunity. And you all have the opportunity to help this move forward today and now with the right team of people. Seeing behind the scenes, what I see some of is personal relationships that go back from before I was born, creating friction in what is the most important thing that this city needs to be focused on. If something like what happened in Altadena happens here, there will be no more tourism. There will be people moving out of the city with no insurance, with empty lots, and you can change that today.
Thank you, Mr. Blacklock. Steve Watson, Stephen Watson, Renee Roth, and Gabriel Gartrell. Gary Gartrell, sorry. Gary, thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Stephen Watson. I am the Executive Director at Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council. We are partners, work hand in hand with Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. As you've seen by now, executive directors at fire safe councils like to talk a lot, so I'll try and keep it a little short. So, I have a few different points I want to touch on. One is that this is not a competition. We welcome, we work with them, we collaborate with them for many years, a really strong partnership, and we will support them in any of these efforts that the city council may fund in this regard. Earlier, it was mentioned in their presentation, we welcome anyone and everyone who wants to offer resources and support for wildfire preparedness in Ojai. I will say the same, but for Ventura County. We welcome that massively. For us, our fire safe council, we have a lot of projects and programs, and unfortunately, we have very limited resources to do that work. We have one regional firewise coordinator on staff who is working with over 30 communities at this moment in time. We can't keep up with the demand. So, we need to have that extra support in these localized intimate areas that Ojai is, there's a huge threat for wildfire. It's been talked about. I don't need to speak about it right now, but we need these groups that are local and know the area. In a perfect world, we wouldn't have to offer support or projects or programs throughout the county. We would have these fire safe councils, these groups scattered throughout the county, we could step up to then support and nurture them for the admin work, the grant management, all this other stuff that comes with it that is not talked about that much, but pretty challenging. And lastly, I want to kind of make a comparison that many people have said to us, why do we need a regional fire safe council when we have Ventura County Fire Department? And I'll say here, we have one of the best fire departments in the world, hands down. But at the same time, they need help too. They need that community engagement. They need that boots-on-the-ground work. And it was mentioned earlier that we're looking at long-term. We want to look at long-term approach, right? Instead of just kind of a one-year approach. However, the type of work that's being done in here, when we are teaching and educating and working with homeowners on this type of activity, wildfire preparedness, we're training them for life. We're essentially showing them what they can do to keep their homes and neighborhoods safe, long-term. And that's the sustainability that we believe in on a neighborhood-targeted, centralized-focused approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Watson. Renee Roth, Gary Gartrell, and Jim Bailey.
Good evening, council members. I'm glad we're here. I tried to stay home, but I just couldn't do it. Rachel, I really appreciated your opening remarks. I do believe that the city is committed, and I feel that that was an amazing presentation of the Fire Safe Council. You know I support the Fire Safe Council proposal. I've sent a couple of emails. I didn't know if they got them. I didn't hear from you, so I sent another one. My biggest concern, and I just, I've lived here in Ojai for 25 years. I love our town. I love this place. I love just driving a few blocks and going to a council meeting. It's amazing where we live, and I'd like to see it stay. I want us to be able to be here for a while. And I've been involved with nonprofits. I've seen how some of the nonprofits work and which ones survive and which ones are doing a good job and which ones are struggling. For example, the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, who is here tonight. The Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, when I moved here 25 years ago, they had a staff of three people, three, count them, three. And they now probably have a staff of 30, maybe 25 to 30. That's really exponential growth for a community our size. They also have a full-time development director who raised funds for them full-time. That's their job. There are many in our community who are not that well endowed. For example, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, which was mentioned tonight. Thank you, Brian. The Ojai Valley Green Coalition tried to have a project to restore and do a garden and a development project, and the city stopped the funding for the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. They pulled their $50,000 and they folded. The Green Coalition folded and had to reinvent themselves for about three years trying to figure out how to get started again. Now, to me, that is really sad that our city puts $50,000, takes it away, and a nonprofit folds completely and cannot fund themselves. So, I believe our nonprofits and those who get seed money are a critical component going forward on how we're going to work together. I started the Matilla Ha School Yard Habitat. Those kids are now growing native plants at the nursery at Nordoff High School. They have submitted a proposal. We met with Leslie Rule and the woman who's running the program, and they have a proposal for you tonight. And it's pennies on the dollar compared to the native plant nursery that I know is coming forth.
Thank you, Ms. Roth. Gary Gartrell, Jim Bailey, and Tom Maloney.
I'm Gary Gartrell. I've been in Ojai for 71 years, so I'm not a newbie. Been around for all the fires. I do want to speak from the private school perspective because I worked at Ojai Valley School forever, retired now. And during the Thomas fire, I was responsible for the resident students because of the timing of what was happening. I went to the upper campus, helped Craig Floyd evacuate the upper campus students, and most of you know the girls dorm burnt down and the science building burnt down. And if Craig hadn't made that decision early to evacuate those kids, there might have been deaths. And also at Thatcher School, where the fire came down right to the edge of Thatcher School, if the wind hadn't changed suddenly, Thatcher may have burnt down and it might have kept going into town. I was lucky because I happened to know Tony McHale was a fire captain. He went, graduated from the lower campus. I called him up on the phone and said, "What should I do?" And that's not a good plan, really. And so, as those of you were here, all the roads were blocked. We had buses, but you can't drive a bus through a traffic jam. So, we did evacuate all the kids. Tony suggested that maybe that was a good idea, said of trying to tough it out at lower campus. And we brought the upper kids down and eventually got them all back home. But some people have mentioned the economic impact of it, and it was absolutely devastating for all the boarding schools, which are a major business in town. There's four boarding schools in town, which probably per capita is one of the biggest in the world. It employs, you know, the boarding schools, private schools employ a lot of people in town. And we need experts like the Fire Safe Council now to prepare us for a fire. If you wait, you might wait too long, people may die. That's not exaggeration. And all of you that were here know when the Thomas fire started. So, that'll come up pretty soon, that timing. And you get a big wind, and next thing you know, a fire started again, and we're not prepared. And so, I'm pleading for you, let's get going on this.
Thank you, sir. Jim Bailey, Tom Maloney, and Tanya Parker.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Jim Bailey. I'm a resident of the city of Ojai. I'm also the Executive Director of Rocktree Sky, and I am the Director and Developer of the Ojai Learning Ecosystem. So, I'll speak with some background of those experiences, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident of the city of Ojai. And so, I want to say that I'm here in support of the city doing something. My preference would be to work with what the Fire Safe Council has brought in proposal. I met with them recently and was deeply impressed by their collaborative values. I believe that the only way our city is going to have the type of resilience that's going to allow us to thrive into the future is through a very deep-reaching collaborative approach between the many nonprofits, governmental agencies, private schools, as many members of the community as we can possibly have. I also valued their expertise. I was in their office, saw their maps, saw the binders of work that they've done, and it makes sense to me that if the city were to ask them to focus that on city goals, that we would be getting a lot for our dollar of bringing these folks who've been at this for a long time. But I hear there's also other folks here tonight looking for some funding support that ties in as well. OVLC with the nursery, the Nordoff High School CTE program that's developing native plants. And I believe that it's, you know, it's a both-and, you know, approach that we can lift all these boats. And, you know, I really believe in the saying, "If you want to go fast, go alone, but if you want to go far, go together." And as many of us as we can bring in to do this work so that we won't be faced with situations that I experienced this year in my role as Director at Rocktree Sky where I had families in the spring calling who'd lost their home, relocated to Ojai, staying with friends and families, and wondering, was there any space for their young people to come and join? Because the Waldorf School or the Montessori School, whatever program they were at in the Palisades was gone now, or, you know, they couldn't get access to. And so, you know, I met some of these people who've had to totally reconfigure their lives, and it's been really devastating. Those of us who were here during Thomas fire know that if the wind has shifted, it could have been a very different scenario for our city. So, thank you for your time, Council, and thank you for focusing on fire safety.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Tom Maloney, Tanya Parker, and Larry Steingold.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilors. So, one word, synchronicity. I think that captures what you're hearing. There's a, you know, after running into a couple of you at the very lovely Chamber Mixer at the theater the other day, I reached out to Chris the next morning, and he said, "Absolutely, your nursery expansion ties so closely with our $7 million Forest Health Grant from CAL FIRE to really restore our river and change what is a landscape feature that should be an asset in wildland firefighting, but is now a liability because of invasion to, back to it being in the asset column from a community readiness perspective." The other word would be readiness. We've got all our permits in place for the nursery expansion. I've got, literally have contracts sitting on my desk waiting to be signed, but delays at CAL FIRE on the permit decision are needing us to sort of up this. We're looking to double our production and increase diversity of native plants collected here in the Ojai Valley, so honoring the genetic integrity of our valley is a very important thing for some of our botanists. That, you know, with this expansion, we can do that, and for the crew and Fire Safe Council and other fuel hazard reduction methods, we've got, we'll have the plants to reestablish native habitat in a meaningful way. The alignment that we have is very clear with these organizations. We work with the crew and the Fire Safe Council all the time. And then, as you've heard over and over, leverage, leverage, leverage. Our proposal before you tonight is leverage just on the specifics of that proposal, 4.5, over 4.5 to 1, so the city dollars. But, you know, so that's not 50 to, what was it, 1.8 million, but it's close. So, 25 to 1. So, the timing, though, it's the timing question. If we don't break ground this year, we won't have the capacity to really fully implement that Forest Health Grant that was featured in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago. So, thanks for your time and consideration of our proposal, and it's in direct alignment with everything else you're hearing at the Fire Safe Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Tanya Parker, Larry Steingold, and Dan Cooper.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, council members. I'm Tanya Parker. I'm the Deputy Director at the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. I'm here tonight in support of OVLC's request for $150,000 for our native plant nursery as it directly relates to Measure C. The nursery is the heart of our efforts to restore habitat, protect our local genetics, and support climate resilience across the valley. This includes our fires and floods, but its impact goes beyond our preserves. Through our ReWild Ojai program and our Certified Native Garden Program, we are helping residents restore their own yards and neighborhoods. There are already more than 40 certified native gardens in our valley, creating pockets of biodiversity and stitching together habitat corridors for birds, pollinators, and other wildlife. The nursery also supports the $7 million grants and many other grants that we get for restoration, which I think if we included all those, we might be able to get that 24 to 1. But we also hold workshops at our nursery. We host interns and volunteer days. We engage hundreds of residents every year and connect people to the land and to each other, and it's a place where community members actively participate in climate solutions. To meet this growing demand, we need the ability to produce more plants. With this expansion, as Tom mentioned, we'll double our production to 20,000 plants a year, and we'll supply native species to all the restoration projects beyond ours for the crew and Fire Safe Council and private homeowners alike, all grown from locally sourced seeds and to preserve the unique genetics of our region. An investment at this time is crucial because the projects are all permitted and ready. Our contractors are lined up, and this is shovel-ready. But if we lose this short, critical time period in our growing window, we won't be able to have plants ready for this Forest Health Grant and other projects and the community needs as well. So, this project directly supports Measure C's goals by advancing climate resilience in sustainable green infrastructure and strengthening our community involvement and in Ojai's, strengthening the community's involvement in Ojai's environmental future. So, thank you for your time and supporting the work that makes Ojai stronger in all these ways, greener, and more connected.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Larry Steingold, Dan Cooper, and then Sudip Mathupalli.
Good evening. Larry Steingold, citizen voter, and first fire, 2017. Prior to that, it was only blizzards. Didn't wake up about fire until my insurance was going to be canceled. Now, all of a sudden, I'm concerned. And then we have the fires that have occurred. They know their business. You don't. You want to have studies. I love my city councilor, all right? And I respect what you want to do, Leslie, but let's move on. I mean, we reinvent, they don't want to reinvent the wheel. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. Two months ago, they came up with a proposal. Nobody else came up with a proposal. You didn't see Mr. Roper. You didn't see any of the people you mentioned or might have mentioned. If they want, but we put it on hold for a month, or two weeks, come up with a proposal, no proposal. They've made phone calls, they've made emails. Great. They saw a half a million dollars on the table. Spread it around. We already do no-bid contracts. We already have sole-source contracts. Mention Roper, give them 100 grand. You want to give somebody else 100 grand, give them 100 grand. They'll specify the crew. They'll specify all sorts of people. It's okay. Okay. I mean, we can give the friends and family and neighbors. It's all right, as long as they do the job, but we've got to get the job done because right now, we're dithering. I mean, nobody's mandated amber screens. The fire in Camarillo is how long ago? Nine months ago? Ten months ago? A year ago? How about some trees? Anything. Do something. But this is enough already. I mean, we're reinventing it. They're the experts. You want to hire more experts. You want to have committees. You want to have council meetings. Let's just get going. I mean, no one else made any proposals. Everybody else wants a piece, but you don't see proposals from anybody else. The crew's already part of the deal. I mean, that's not a, this is not a problem. Just get it done, please.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Dan Cooper, Sudip Mathupalli, if I'm pronouncing that right, and then Peter Romi.
Good evening. My name's Dan Cooper, resident of District 4.
Thank you.
A comprehensive fire mitigation prepare and this proposal of this caliber is long overdue in Ojai. I moved here in 2017 and witnessed the Thomas fire, helping to evacuate the guests as part of the management team at my work. It was clear at the time that the valley was very fortunate to have firefighters step up and lucky that the predicted winds did not blow. But there can be no doubt in anyone's minds after the Palisades fires, just how, as a town, extremely fortunate we were. The proposal in front of the city council should be the first year... The proposal in front of the city council should be the first year of a multi-year commitment. It is a well-thought-out, comprehensive plan that has drawn on the experience of fire professionals and management professionals, land management professionals, and lessons learned. A proposal like this that passes muster on content and planning must be seen as a start of a long-term strategy designed to respond to the threat of climate changeability. We have seen the effects of the fire on Paradise and Palisades that seem to take everyone by surprise. The devastating floods in Texas, which is, it seems, according to some reports, mitigation efforts were actively refused or limited for, at worst, political reason and, at best, apathy. This cannot be us. Before the council today is a proposal that is action, not reaction. When the next fire threatens the valley, no one here can say we did not have a plan. We did not know what measures to take. Again, on your table today is that plan. Mayor Gilman, Councilmember Lang, Councilmember Rule, Councilmember Whitman, and Councilmember Mang. This plan must be approved now. The OFSC has excellent working relationships with other organizations, with nonprofits such as OVLC, the Ventura Fire Safe Council, with 25 years' experience and having a proven track record of managing 8 million in hard-won grants dating back to 2000. They are the only qualified team to see it through. As residents of the valley, we are custodians. Our time here is limited, but we have a responsibility to adapt to this new climate reality now and find a way to preserve both the way of life and the land that nourishes it. The OFSC has spent months in deep consultation with experienced professional and community members. They have the resources to address your questions, and they must be allowed to start work. I am so grateful to the council members for this opportunity to speak, and I hope that you will be able to hold the big picture in your hands and move this proposal forward, unfettered, so that we can all say we came together to protect the valley and be an example of what is possible. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Sudip Matupali, Peter Roming, and Bill Miley.
Thanks, Andy.
Sudip Matupali Rao. Matupali Rao. Oh, I didn't, okay, you got it. Okay.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, sir.
It's all good.
Nope.
I just want to sort of thank you, everybody, for being here. I brought the flag, and we started the meeting. Usually, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, and there's something solemn about it, and I, there's something about honoring the values that are perennial, and, but I just wanted to just pause for a moment and acknowledge that this is, this is a very sacred moment and for wildfire resilience. Forget about proposals, forget about budgets and councils, and so I, I just want to acknowledge that, and it's in geologic time, you know, so it's, I'm grateful to everybody here who's here and, because these are universal values, and I am grateful, first of all, to, for your public service, council members, and Councilmember Andrew Whitman in my district, and I am grateful for your contributions, and, and also, Councilmember Mang. I am aware of the Teormina neighborhood where, historic neighborhood where, because I was there with Chris when we helped them, and so, I know that Mayor and Rachel, thank you for observing that there was something fishy about an organization coming up with a proposal. It's actually, I just want to mention, address that. We are paying attention to what the city is doing and the goals, and when we noticed that you guys made the tactics and goals, and I'm sharing this because I actually created the last page in our, in our proposal, and that is in the historical record. Brian Akins just mentioned that that proposal has gone into the digital archives of the city. So, the last page shows the city's tactics and goals that you've established for wildfire safety and how we are addressing that. And so, it has come organically out of your deliberations. We were just paying attention, and that's, and so I'm sorry, I'm sorry you were alerted or questioned or, so, I apologize. We were just, we were just, we wanted to be present and share, so. And Councilmember Leslie Rule, thank you so much. It's a partnership, and Ben, we're hoping to work with you, and also Taylor is not here, but the terms, if we can get the terms right, we're ready to work. So, we're taking a stand for wildfire resilience, right? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Peter Roming, Bill Miley, and Callie O'Connor.
Thank you. Mayor Gilman and city council members. My name is Peter Roming, and I live in Persimmon Hill, and I'm not associated with any of these great organizations that have been mentioned earlier tonight. About three years ago, together with a few other residents of Persimmon Hill, I formed the Persimmon Hill Fire Safe Committee. Our first goal was to reduce the fire risk at Persimmon Hill and the rest of Ojai by finding a way to remove about 100 large eucalyptus trees and other invasive plants along the San Antonio Creek just south of our neighborhood. Roughly half of these trees are located in Persimmon Hill. The other half, or the common area of Persimmon Hill, the other half is Ventura County land. We went out and we mapped all these trees, and I struggled to find a way to execute on such a large and costly project. It wasn't until I met Chris Dance and Callie O'Connor with Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council that all the pieces fell together. Their work ultimately resulted in securing a half-million-dollar grant to fund this project. The project is well underway, with the CEQA review nearly completed and tree removal scheduled to start later this year. Also, Persimmon Hill was recently recognized as a firewise community, and a few weeks ago, we had our first annual meeting. I reached out to the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council and requested a presentation of the Firewise Community Program. Both Chris and Callie came and delivered an excellent and informative presentation. I have now worked with the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, especially with Chris Dance and Callie O'Connor, for over three years. They are incredibly knowledgeable, always helpful, and a pleasure to work with. They know what needs to be done and how to get it done. I strongly urge the city council to support a contract at Ojai Valley Fire Safety Council. They are the experts, and I have every confidence they will do a great job for the city of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bill Miley, Callie O'Connor, and Jane Walter.
Hello.
Hello.
I've lived here for about 57 years. I am following the recommendations. I just installed in my house Ember Screen on the front porch, on the front porch, covering 30 by 8 feet. Material was $1,800. Can we get the needed services at less cost or at no cost to the city budget? That's not the question. We pay for streets, crosswalk lights. We need to pay for our city's non-destruction by hiring a trusted firm that has shown credibility and success to start an official protection future. Comparing the other city costs, $1 million a mile per street segment, reducing and preventing wildfire burning and destruction is enormous, life-destroying or life-saving. Cost for a benefit seems to be the key factor in challenging the credibility of this proposal. I don't see the value. I just don't understand why this element should cost so much. The listing of staff and their educational skills shows extensive resource availability. The networking and established relationships is extreme. Fix a broken pipe, it's done. Remove a tree, it's done. Lower wildfire risk of a city is not easy and long-term. They network with over 70 organizations. History of the organization can be very important. They go back 25 years. You go back three or four years. Program or project services by the number of people and households. 7,800 people cost about $67 per person. 3,400 houses, it's about $160 per person. In my view, there's no other organization which can comprehensively view, plan, execute, prevention, remediation programs than this one. Summary, the whole town depends upon not burning down. How to do so? The streets need to be good for fire trucks, cars to travel, signals to moderate the traffic, but houses and buildings should not burn down. The Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council can help us do that. So far, we've done little. $485,000 of a $17 million general fund is really small. The general fund is gone if we burn down. Please support the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Callie O'Connor, Jane Walter, and Lorraine Luedick, I'm not seeing the last name right. Lauren. Callie.
Hello to the city of Ojai and residents. My name is Callie Anne O'Connor. I am Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council's Assistant Director, and I've been there for many years. And I have the pleasure of doing good work at home. I'm from here. I graduated from Thatcher, and I keep deepening my roots here, and I'm lucky to do so. I have had the pleasure of meeting many of you here by either visiting your home and conducting a home hardening assessment. I want to thank the residents who take that initiative and also invite me in for water on hot days. I've also had the pleasure of working side by side with some of you for good fire prescribed burns at the Steelhead Preserve at the Bird Song Ranch as a Type 2 firefighter. I've also met you at your home, thank you, Peter, to host workshops with you, to talk about firewise development, fire science, grant opportunities. I am blessed that our work converges people from various walks of life and various generations of life, whether it's working on the Community Resilience Centers project, or the vulnerability assessment with fire engineers, or creating prescribed burning plans with shepherds or prescribed burn plan. I've also, of course, had the pleasure of learning so much from our team. I look back around and I see and I feel a part of the older generation, my generation, and the generation to come, literally walking in Celine Moomi's fire boots as I do a prescribed burn. For those of you who don't know, she is our pre-fire specialist at the Ventura County Fire Department and our CAL FIRE liaison. And I think about the inevitable disasters ahead of us and hope and pray, but also do the work that will ensure that we make it all through together. I was in the wildfire town hall in March hosted by Assemblymembers Steve Bennett and Matt LeVere, and one of the things that Steve said that stood out to me is that we're really good at, you know, dealing with acute events like disasters, but the slow phenomenon where our daily lives aren't interrupted, we're not so good at that. And I would say that we are post-Thomas Fire, pre-next inevitable fire. So, let's use those Measure C funds for what they're designed for. They're designed for CIP projects and wildfire mitigation efforts since 2020, and they come from a TOT tax, I believe. So, they're replenished every year, and I think those funds should be allocated to what they're designed for, and not only to support our proposal, which I think also has good work in paradigm-shifting the culture to integrate our fire reality, but also all of the other orgs. It's an "and" situation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. I know, I know. Hold back, hold back. Jane Walter, Lorraine Luedick, and then Chris Dance.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Jane Walter, Executive Director of Help of Ojai. We've worked closely with the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council for several years, including serving on the Technical Advisory Group for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. At Help of Ojai, we serve vulnerable residents, seniors, people with disabilities, those without transportation. We also led disaster case management for two years following the Thomas Fire, so we've seen firsthand how critical coordination and preparedness are before, during, and after wildfire. The Fire Safe Council's current proposal to the city reflects deep community knowledge and a proactive approach to wildfire resilience. I strongly urge the city to support this proposal and continue collaborating with the council to protect Ojai's most at-risk residents.
Thank you very much. Loren, I'm not even going to try to do your last name. Thank you. Chris Dance, and then Cole Bush. Tell me how to pronounce your last name.
Lian Dyke.
Say it one more time.
Lauren Lian Dyke.
Lian Dyke. Lauren Lian Dyke. Thank you.
Yes, it's a mouthful. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks for giving me the time to speak. I'm a lifelong resident of Ojai Valley. Went to Oakview School when it was a school. Minors, went to Matilha and Nordoff. So, I have noticed there's one thing missing from this conversation that we could do now for $0, which is shut off the power during extreme weather events. On January 7th, the same night the Palisades Fire and the Eaton Fire started, three trees blew down in our district, knocking power lines down. The corner of Grand and Daly, a dear friend's house, the big cedar fell. She said she saw sparks flying out of the side of her house when the tree pulled the power lines down. 80 mile-per-hour winds. Why was the power on? That's my first question. Second question, who turns the power off? Simple solution. Thomas Fire, power lines. Eaton Fire, power lines. Lahaina, power lines. Paradise, power lines. This is the common denominator. Lowest-hanging fruit, shut off the power. We need to have an emergency utility shut-off plan with the fire chief, the council, city manager, whoever is in charge, and Edison. And if Edison won't allow us to shut the power off, we need to figure out a workaround. I know there's a switch somewhere. And one of you knows where it is. And, and on that note, I think this is a great plan. I really, fire mitigation, fuels reduction, I've done 25 years of property management, land management, know how to run a chainsaw and run a mower on a tractor. I've done a lot of fuels management, but the simplest, lowest-hanging fruit, shut off the power preemptively. When we know these weather events are coming, we have week notice, at least, but the power wasn't shut off, and that, to me, is extreme negligence because it could have resulted in deaths. So, thank you so much.
I would just respond to you to say, we met with SCE just last week, so it's definitely on our radars, but I appreciate what you're saying.
Great. That's good to hear. Thank you so much.
And Mayor, there is a program that Edison has, and you may have seen the flurry of emails and text messages that you get in times of severe weather, so that is in existence currently.
Usually, people complain that they shut it off too much, but...
That's usually the complaint we get.
Okay. Chris Dance, and then Cole Bush.
Thank you. Well, the name of Bob Roper has come up a number of times here, and, you know, what does Bob Roper have to say? One of his best-known firefighters in Ventura County. So, we asked him, and I'm going to read into the record the letter and the response that Mr. Roper gave us. Dear Mayor and council members, I am submitting this letter in support of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council's proposal for fire hardening, wildfire safety, and risk mitigation services. I've spent most of my 48-year fire service career in Ventura County, with the last 15 years as the county fire chief. Like ourselves, I was a witness to many wildfires, especially the Thomas Fire in 2017. As the vegetation has recovered, it's not a matter of if there will be another devastating fire, but when it will occur. The 2025 Eaton and Palisades wildfire provided a glimpse of the future if society and individuals do not take proactive action. The Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council has put forward a plan of action that is reasonable and prudent. It is the first step in getting the public to become part of the solution. Because it's clearly displayed in Eaton and Palisades wildfires, there will never be enough fire resources to suppress all wildfires once ignited. While new codes and planning conditions are value-proven, the largest hazard we encounter is the existing inventory of structures and the annual maintenance of these structures. The wildfire problem can never be overcome with a one-and-done effort. We live in a wildfire-prone environment, therefore, constant vigilance is essential. The contents of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council proposal are sound and deserve your attention and support. Additionally, the city should reinstate, rein institute the Ojai Disaster Council as another advisory body to address evacuation aspects, sheltering, community messaging, and alerts. While the city owns... While the city only has control over its jurisdictions, wildfires do not respect jurisdictional lines. So all wildfire efforts should be done on a valley, regional aspect involving fire, law, and emergency management entities. It has become quite clear that the upfront investments in funding and labor are much cheaper than the recovery costs following a wildfire incident. Due to my work out of town on some national wildfire issues, I regret I cannot speak in person on the 29th. As a resident of the city, I have and will continue to assist as needed to ensure Ojai remains a safe community. Sincerely, Bob Roper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danch.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Danch?
Yes, please.
I, I just wanted to confirm that Bob Roper is actually on your advisory committee. Is that correct?
He has recently come onto our advisory committee. He has been there for many, many years and then was not there for a long time, and now he's back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cole Bush.
Good evening. I feel like I'm amongst friends, and I'm very happy that I'm at this city council meeting with the themes of tonight than other city council meetings. So, thank you. My name is Cole Bush. I am your local shepherdess. I am a business owner. My business is Shepherdess Land and Livestock. We're a prescribed grazing, uh, service provider here in the Ojai Valley. I'm also the co-founder of the community-supported grazing program of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council called Graze Ojai. I'm also, uh, a committee member of the Range Management Advisory Committee under the Board of Forestry. We're closely with fire departments. I am also, uh, the co-founder and director of Grazing School of the West. So, um, I'm here just to tell you a little bit, uh, as, as a funny shepherd, I think that... I know, I have to lean into the shepherd thing. It's just like, I have to do that. I am so happy to be here, to have the opportunity to give you my pitch as to why the organizations that have, um, provided information, uh, further information for consideration of moving forward. Holistic approach at the foundation of everything that the Fire Safe Council is doing is incredibly important. When I think of holistic approach, I think about culture. Because if we have a culture of care, we have a culture of change. We don't have a culture of fear, and we can actually move from a place where we are empowered as a community. Holistic approach, again, education. With the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, I've had the privilege to work with several, uh, of our local schools. The other grazer in town, Ventura Brushgoats, Michael Light, also, uh, a collaborator in Graze Ojai. We have together grazed hundreds of acres and educated and shown, done walk and talks with the shepherds with students from all over. Ojai, from Thatcher, Besant, Nordoff, Ojai Valley School, Oak Grove, Villanova. And we're continuing to develop partnerships with educators at each one of these schools to integrate how prescribed grazing, and very, animals are a wonderful entry point to get kids excited about our ecologies, um, can be a part of us as community members, um, to see how we can be involved and, and better understand the fire ecology in which we live. The time is now, and we must come together in the spirit that we come together during a natural disaster or thereafter. We have to have that same type of energy in the spirit of preparedness. And when I was writing, "We must come together now," guess what? We are already together. We're all here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Montgomery, anything online?
Yes, Mayor, we have quite a few raised hands. We'll start with Vera, followed by Kathy, and then Valerie.
Okay.
Vera, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Honorable council members, I'm Vera Long, a thirty-year resident of the valley. I began my life's work as a wildland firefighter right here in Ojai. I was on the local fire crew for four years, fire engine for a year, and the Prescott Hotshots. I graduated in the top percentile of municipal fire academy. I fought hundreds of fires across the nation, and I can tell you that there is something special about our area here in Southern California. We are home to the most dangerous and challenging fire conditions in the country. It's thankfully extremely rare for wildland firefighters to die in the line of duty, but when it happens, it is for one of two reasons. Either a lack of training or a breakdown in communication. Our emergency services here are the tops. But in a valley-wide event, all those services will be assigned and unavailable within minutes. We need granular neighborhood-level resiliency, comprehensive risk mitigation, and expert training for self-sufficiency. This must all be in place well before the next fire or earthquake. The time to get started is now. Besides extreme natural hazards, our biggest challenge to meet is that there are only four escape routes for the valley, and they're all two-lane roads. We need comprehensive local buy-in and reliable centralized information hubs for sensibly timed and safe evacuation. The Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council has been serving this valley for twenty-five years and successfully managed over twenty-six federal grants totaling over a million. They're partnered with Ventura County Fire, CAL FIRE, the California Fire Safe Council, the Forest Service, and Ventura County. There's simply no better choice to manage the fire hardening, community training, weather fuel monitoring, and information systems improvements than the Fire Council. We met extensively when organizing the Teramina Emergency Preparedness Project. The council is on the leading edge of fire science, communication technology, and best practices. Their dedication to Ojai, its residents, homes, animals, and ecology is unquestionable. Please let them get to work on this project. It's only a few houses on the street are fire-safe, and the street is still collectively at risk. We are not safe until we are all safe. All of these essential programs take time, and it's not getting any cooler here in the valley. We have a lot to lose, but so much more to gain. Community connections, mutual reliance, peace of mind, and the ability to collectively negotiate with insurance companies. In Los Angeles, thousands were dropped just months, months before the fires. Tragedies upon preventable tragedy. This is also an affordable housing issue. Don't delay in rallying around this project. Thank you for your sage, firewise, and timely support of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. Sincerely, Education Outreach Chairwoman, Ojai Valley Studio Artist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kathy, followed by Valerie, and then Teal. Kathy, you have the floor.
Uh, let's see. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, uh, this is Kathy Lottis. Uh, good evening, Mayor, city council members, and staff. I do have a few comments I would like to make regarding this agenda item. Number one, it is always, almost always, a bad idea to sole-source a contract, which is how this contract with the Fire Safe Council started out. Uh, number two, the CWPP is most heavily focused on the Ojai Valley rather than the city itself. And in fact, within the city limits, we are at less risk than much, much of the rest of the valley. And that's not to say that attention to fire risk and mitigation outside the city limits does not benefit city residents and property. It does. But what we should be paying for is primary focus on actual services and programs designed to help City of Ojai residents, especially seniors and lower-income families, and prioritization of actions the city can take as a governmental entity. As council members, I suggest you take a look at the Santa Barbara Fire Safe Council list of services and programs. There is no need to respin the wheel at great expense to us. We should be capable of applying what they are successfully doing up there in Santa Barbara to here in Ojai and jumpstart this second phase. I don't think a reasonable set of services and programs need be complex or budget-busting. Number three, when the state set up local fire safe councils, the idea was that it would be primarily utilizing community volunteers. And for such a, such a small city as Ojai, we, I feel we are going in the wrong direction with paid by the city Fire Safe Council that includes an executive director and staff. Let's utilize the Fire Safe Council as a volunteer organization. And remember that the professional expertise is with the fire, county firefighting organization, and CAL FIRE. Four, the proposal could be and should be clearer about the specific tasks, man-hours, and budget amount per task. Also, what or how much is focused within the city limits? In addition, it'll be future financial obligation unknown, especially as to what is expected for paid staff. So in conclusion, um, I'd like to rethink what we're doing here with this proposal. We need to focus on City of Ojai needs and doing our part to reduce wildland fire risk. We also need to think about the most cost-effective means of doing so. And by the way, I'm in complete support of the OVLC project, which is very specific and modest, and I assume that that's a separate project. Thank you very much for listening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Valerie, followed by Teal, and then Stephen.
Okay.
Valerie, you have the ability to unmute, and I'd like to ask if you have raised hands on two devices.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
That answers that.
Thank you. Uh, we're, we're in Maui, and, uh, we're in evacuation mode for a tsunami coming in. So, we have, uh, water and fire going on. Thank you, uh, city council for putting together this meeting. And, um, the wildfire risk in Ojai is undeniable, and we cannot afford to take it lightly. It's imperative for you to support the Ojai Fire Safety Council's proposal in full. The proposal's not just a plan, it's a lifeline. It represents the knowledge, experience, and commitment needed to protect our homes, our families, and our future. To reject it in favor of frugal alternatives, especially in light of the city's ongoing struggles and a risk that endangers every single one of us. We all want to be responsible stewards of our resources. But when it comes to protecting lives and property, cutting corners, or delaying action to choose the cheapest option, isn't just short-sighted, it's dangerous. Every time we stall, hesitate, or try to do things on the cheap, we're gambling with people's safety. And that's a gamble no one should be willing to take. Because at the end of the day, no amount of savings is worth a life lost or a community destroyed. Right now, our city is facing some real challenges. We're short-staffed, and ba, based on past experience, there have been some troubling issues around internal processes with potential mismanagement. Things that have shaken public trust. In this kind of environment, asking our dedicated but already overburdened staff along with the city council to directly oversee and manage multiple vendors for fire mitigation? Well, that's just not practical, and frankly, it's risky. What we need is a smarter, more efficient approach. One that ensures accountability and lets our people focus on what they need to do best while still getting the job done right. It's time to make the hard choices, investing wisely, planning carefully, and acting deftly. Because true leadership isn't about looking for the cheapest way out. It's about doing what's right, even when it's difficult. Please support the Ojai Fire Safety Council proposal as it stands. Perhaps consider increasing the total fire preparedness budget to provide funds for any additional projects with grassroots organizations and community members.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Teal, followed by Stephen, and then Tisha.
Thanks.
Teal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Weston.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you all for being there tonight. And I don't know about any of you, but I'm pretty much in my fire-trauma brain after listening. Um, it's a response that I think I can calm down from. And I'm just asking the city council to, well, I echo what Kathy Lottis said. And I also think that the city council needs a policy to require an itemized budget along with the proposal. And at the very least, to hold, a policy to hold that grant recipient accountable for the spending of taxpayers' money. And that doesn't go just for... This grant, it goes for any money going out from the city, because I would think that the taxpayers would want to know where it's actually going. Thank you for your service, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen, followed by Tisha. Stephen?
Hi, this is Steve Colome. I recognize and appreciate all that has been done by our Fire Safe Council, but I do not think proceeding with the current proposal is the most fiscally responsible approach. One week ago, I listened to a free session presented by the Santa Barbara Botanical Garden on Ready for Wildfire: Smart Strategies for Fire-Safe Living. That two-hour informative session is recorded and is available on the garden's website. As part of that presentation, the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara County Fire Safe Council gave an engaging and action-oriented presentation. I think we should recognize that historically, Fire Safe Councils are typically grassroots, community-led organizations where neighbors unite to reduce wildfire risk, and volunteerism is the core component of their structure and mission. In most cases, they rely heavily on volunteers for their operations and activities, making them largely volunteer-based organizations. What is proposed by our Fire Safe Council creates a bureaucracy that most likely will come back each and every year for similar budgetary allocations. The Santa Barbara Fire Safe Council has been around for about the same length of time as our council, but their first paid staff member was added only four years ago. Geographically, they cover the entire county of Santa Barbara. Their website is well-developed with many actionable homeowner recommendations. Rather than conducting additional needs assessments and designs for defensible spaces, they have current recommendations for property owners. I encourage you to review the Santa Barbara County Fire Safe Council's website along with their wildfire home hardening guide. Adopting these materials would get us a long way toward our goal. This is not a one-and-done process, and I'm not sure we want to form and fund a half-million-dollar-a-year bureaucracy. My recommendation is that you take a pause, review actions that are already available from local jurisdictions, the state, and CAL FIRE, and find a more economically sustainable approach to this risk, one that unfortunately is not going away anytime soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tisha, followed by Leslie. Tisha, you have the floor.
Thank you, and, uh, thanks, everyone. I wanted to say very briefly, because I don't want to reiterate every, everything everyone else has said about how important this issue is. I think this is a situation where it's an "and" and not an "or." I think we need every solution that has been brought up tonight and more. Five hundred thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket to what the damages could be, not to mention loss of lives. That's, five hundred thousand is about half of a home, um, or a structure in Ojai. And if this is really about money, then let's figure out how we can, um, make up the money in other ways. My suggestion is for this year, since we're at the eleven, eleven and a half hour, to go ahead and improve from our, I think it's called the general fund. And then starting, um, for the next year's budget, that it, that it does become a line item, budget item for fire, being that this is, this and other, um, climate issues is the number-one issue um, that our city faces, as many people have pointed out. And so it does need to become a line item of how much we want to spend, which I think should be a million-plus dollars personally. How do we make that money? The amount of money that flows through this city every weekend from tourism, and the tourism is, relies on our town being here and not in flames. Um, there's more than enough money that we could raise from a TOT, um, any kind of other taxes. So I think we approve what is before us now, along with anything else, any other, any other suggestions that have been brought up tonight, and then start next year with a line item to our budget. Um, so, thank you, and, uh, yeah, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Mayor, no more raised hands.
Okay. How are we feeling? Do we, are we ready to proceed? Do we need a quick break? How are you guys? How are you guys? Quick break, come right back and talk.
Quick breaks are good.
Okay. Seven minutes.
That's not quick.
Seven minutes?
It's only eight twenty.
Come on, man!
I'm telling him. There we go. Okay, everybody, we're gonna get started again. We will start, and Ms. Rule's gonna start first.
Okay. Can we hear me? Yes, thank you, Mayor Gilman. So, I want to start by acknowledging something that we all know, but, you know, has been said clearly enough here anyway. This is multifaceted. This is a complex, but not-so-complex problem. We're being asked to make a significant financial commitment during challenging budget times, but we do have quite a surplus. Still, I understand my colleagues' desire for more detailed cost breakdowns and questions about the process. These aren't unreasonable concerns, they're actually really good stewardship of public funds. But I would like us to step back and look at the bigger picture, as has been shown here through these last two and a half hours. What we're actually buying, you know, I want to talk about what we're purchasing. We're not just buying services, we're investing in expertise that took 25 years to build, local expertise. These... Will sits in my district. We have heard from everyone here who is connected to one council member or another, who has had complete support for this program. And the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council has managed multimillion-dollar, grant-funded projects, as they said, they have hit all of their benchmarks and have come in on time. Think about that. And they have brought in roughly eight million dollars in funding to benefit our community in fire, in being a fire-wise community. Tonight, we're considering spending four thousand eighty-two... Four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, but if their track record holds, they'll likely leverage that into several times more in state and funding federal grants. I've been reading through the public comments and the general comments, and although we had a few who spoke against it, not one person mentioned, other than the three that called in, that they didn't support this program. Not one NGO, not one fire... Not one fire-hardening organization that works in this valley has said anything but that they support this. That means the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council, the Crew, the Land Conservancy, former Fire Chief Bob Roper, as well as all of the current Fire Chiefs who have spoken in support of this over the last couple of sessions. These are people and organizations that work in this field every day. They're not just supporting this proposal, they're telling us that there is no comparable alternative, that we need to build the next generation of fire-safe leaders. And I want to... I just want to talk briefly about the two proposals that have come in. One of the reasons why I pull... I agreed to pull this item was that there were questions, and I wasn't sure how deeply they went, but I felt they had to be investigated, I thought they were reasonable. I have investigated them, and I have come to the conclusion that, for the most part, they're unfounded. The complaints, to me, were not major. They were either individuals who had a different idea on the way this should go, fair enough, but not enough to derail a program or a proposal like this. But that having been said, I did and was introduced to the woman, to the instructor, Ed Nordoff, who runs an ag program with roughly an ag program, a seed... A seed-growing program, a native-plant program, and that synergy, we have a proposal from her, and that never would have happened had I not agreed to pull this, and I'm very, very excited about that. So, that is the good side of it, and I wanted to say, I did agree to pull this, and I investigated the questions that came up, and I found them to be, while they may have been relevant and legitimate, in the end, they weren't anywhere near strong enough to derail this proposal for me. So, that's where I stand now. And so, when it comes down to the Fire Safe Council proposal and the Nordoff programs and all the programs with the nonprofits, they aren't separate initiatives. They're complementary investments in both immediate safety and long-term community resilience, and I think all of the organizations understand that. We can speak more about, you know, should the council and the city be, you know, promoting individual RFPs and, you know, being... Managing those grants? I would say no, but I think it's a question that we can answer. Now, about the cost details, some of us wanted to see. When Bill Miley wrote that his comment that, you know, the cost per home hardening assessment for a hundred homes, he's right, you know, it was sixty-seven cents per home. That is reasonable. And how do you put a line item cost on the relationships with... Oh! Oh, gosh.
We can come back if you need to say more.
Well, can I finish up?
Is it... Yeah, finish up briefly, quickly.
Quickly, okay. Basically, what I'm gonna say is that I don't believe we should slow down and create a more formal RFP process. I want to be clear about what a timeline to me and with my experience in... I wanna be clear about what a timeline to me, and with my experience in three years here, we're looking at five, six months before this actual work begins, and our community has told us that that is not acceptable to them. I would like to approve the contract, but build in the accountability that addresses any of our concerns. We can structure this with quarterly reporting requirements. We can ask for more detailed breakdowns after three months or six months, which we did originally have. We can require, you know, competitive bidding for subcontracts. There's things that we can do, but none of them, none of them mean that we don't need to start this now or that we can't. So, that's my, that's my comment.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, so, I, I, I think a few things stand out to me about our, from our converse, from our public comments and from the deep dive that I've done over the last several weeks with fire. And that is that I am strongly in favor of having this be an annual budget item, and I would love to have that come back as, you know, that where every, every year, we are looking at spending a certain amount of money on home harding, home hardening, fuel reduction, clearance, and also education. And, and so, I want this, I want this to be something that we prioritize as a city and that we, as a city council, take responsibility for. So, that's, that's number one. And, and I think that, you know, a couple of things, you know, we have a couple of other proposals that came in just in the last 24 hours for the land conservancy for OUSD. I haven't seen that one yet. But, you know, what we're talking about right now with the Fire Safe Council and with the land conservancy, which I have, these both are for fire efforts, we're already at $630,000. And this is funding that's, that's, you know, there's an immediate need for, but if we don't have, we don't take a step back and look at how much money do we want to budget for this? You know, what, what is our overall fire policy? I think we need to lay down some groundwork and, and come up with, and develop a real solid fire policy moving forward. So, that way, so other organizations don't feel slighted, or there isn't this... Thank you. Let me just finish. So, that way, organizations don't feel slighted, and we, and, and we are, and the decisions that we make in terms of how we allocate taxpayer dollars is, are based on policy considerations. So, so I would be in support of, and what I've come to over the last couple of weeks, is let's look at what, let's direct, let's look at what we want the Fire Safe Council to do. Let's put out RFPs for fuel, for, for fuel reduction. I think there are some very specific things in their proposal that we could start with right away, with home hardening, and these are, these are things that we talked about in our goals and our priorities. But I would like to come back with, with the budget, with this, with the budgetary conversation as soon as possible.
You done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yes, please go.
So, the issue isn't whether we, as a city, should invest in fire safety. The, the question is, how do we accomplish the goal of fire safety in our community? So, I agree that we're, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out, you know, what our budget is, what amount we can spend. And I think it's really important that we have that before we settle on an overall budget. There's, I think, an admission that the, that the Fire Safe Council proposal doesn't address every fire safety issue that we might wanna address. And, and there may be issues that we do wanna address, but we'll have spent possibly, you know, all that we have. So, I think there's a big concern on my part that there's no segregation between work that's being done in the city limits versus work that's being done in the county unincorporated. I think that we need to, on this and many other subject matters, you know, go to the county, which, the county is responsible for three-quarters of the population of the valley. That's, that's their population. We have a population of 7,500. The rest of the valley is about another 22,000. And, but this, the county's not chipping in with us on these programs, and we should be going to them and asking them to participate with us. Our, our nor, our normal process is to, you know, set out our goals and what we wanna accomplish, and then have, you know, proposals for who can accomplish those for us. And that's not what we're, we're doing here. It's essentially surrendering the issue to...
Hang on, guys, hang on.
It's essentially surrendering the issue to a council that we don't have any control over. So, I mean, if you, if you're gonna remodel a house, you don't go to the contractor and say, hey, I wanna remodel, and here's $500,000. Hope it turns out good. You go through and you specify the things that you want to be done, and the contractor gives you specifics about what it's gonna cost, a budget, for all of the things that you wanna have done. And then you have the ability to look at that budget and say, well, this is, is this, you know, how do I best utilize my money? We're not, we're not getting that. We're being told, this amount of money, no specification on deliverables, and take it or leave it. And I, I don't think that's the right way to approach this issue.
Hold on, it's, please, no, thank you.
So, my biggest concern is that my, I've talked to many, many, many fire experts, and from those conversations, they all emphasize the need to reduce fuels, to reduce the fuels that are in and around a home, to reduce the fuels that are gonna spread embers. And I'm much more interested in, and to do the hardening in terms of screening and insulated windows that would prevent ember penetration into homes. And I'm much more interested in focusing our money and our efforts on those things because those actually will have real-world consequences as soon as they're done. I don't, I think the fact of the people who have shown up here today, I don't think anybody really needs to be educated on, on fire-hardening. I think everybody knows that we have to do it, but it's not getting done. And so, the, the, the way to get it done is to actually, you know, enter into agreements where they're gonna secure the grant funding to get the zero-zone type of, of, the zero-zone compliance accomplished. And I don't think that, you know, individual homes need assessments. They've gotten, they've all got letters in their mailboxes telling them what they have to do for their home. So, why isn't that, you know, being done? I've got a whole bunch more to talk about, and I'll take a break and talk about it when my round comes around again, if you want.
Thanks. You know, first of all, we're all, we all have the same goal. I'm sorry. You know, we, we all believe that this is a huge issue. It's how we go about it that, that we need to focus in on, to see, you know, where we can best, you know, utilize the things that we need. I, I think, you know, I would like to have like a wildfire preparedness, a funding policy, where we have a certain dollar amount, and here's the things we're gonna do with, you know, see what's out there. The people, the crew, CAL FIRE, land conservancy, what they're offering that, you know, serves, services that are available to us with zero cost. And then we can take, you know, come up with the budget to take what's left, to fill in the gaps without paying twice for the same service. You know, saving on time, administrative time, you know, I just, I think measurable goals. You know, I, I just, I have a list of, of things, you know, hardening properties to resist the ember-caused ignitions, that's a huge thing. You know, planting. We all agree that everything, you know, that needs to do, it's putting it in order that we can get basically more bang for the buck without double-dipping, so to say. Like, if somebody's doing this, you know, then we can do this, working together to, you know, to come up with something that can service all of us.
We can go back to you if you wanna take some more.
Thank you.
I just, a couple thoughts, if you wanna reset the timer, thanks. One is that, on a few issues, the city and the county issue, I think we have heard over and over again that there are county projects that we are benefiting from. So, the continuing coming back about we're paying for something that people in the county are gonna benefit from, we are clearly benefiting from work, like clearing that we're getting the benefit of. So, that, to me, is almost a non-starter. Secondly, the Fire Safe Council was requested for more specific budget items, which they offered. And then, I guess what I deeply believe is, if we came up with a reasonable budget that was specified on mitigation, it would be way more than this dollar amount, and we would probably use them for the pieces that we're going to schedule already. So, in my opinion, it would be a grave mistake to not proceed and to say, I definitely want this to be a budget item going forward for each year that we look at in the same way with the arts or anything else. But I believe we're probably going to, we would come back here again, and we would be using them again, but we wouldn't be doing it now. And then, just to be clear, for my land conservancy colleagues, I wanna offer a proposal, which is, next week, when we come back and talk, we have a piece where we're talking about our goals. And since we have a proposal that we've just received, that's not the same as this one, which is that the, the plant growing, that I think my suggestion is they have to be separated, and that should be for next week when we talk about climate resiliency goal. So, that's a suggestion to separate those two. But my, I think we have, I think it's next week, isn't it?
The 12th, I think.
Next week is the FlexPath workshop?
It's FlexPath, but we're also doing city goals and tactics in the public.
We are.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, it seems to me that's the place for that. So, it gives it one week, but still meets any other kind of deadlines. But I really do believe that they have been clear, if it's in with our goals, very clearly. And so, I understand where you're coming from. I feel more confident than I did when it came the first time with the letters that we received. So, I'm not sure how to feel more confident in, in the Fire Safe Council being the organizer, working with all the nonprofits that are here, that they're gonna work with. So, that's my two cents. Please.
Thank you. Just, I have a couple of questions first, for staff. In our, in our, in our goals and priorities with fire, I know we talked about home hardening as being one of our goals, and sirens being another one of the goals. Those were the, the two that I could, oh, you have them right there.
Yeah. I think, I think we also had a program, a proposed program for ember, ember shields at homes, I believe was on there, I think that was one of them, were there three or four?
We worded it in a way that it was very inclusive. So, we said, pursue partnership agreements in cooperation with providers, regional partners, to further efforts that reduce hazard conditions, fuel sources, wildfire prevention grants, including land clearing, educational outreach programs regarding defensible space, home hardening measures. So, we clobbered it all.
Okay. Thank you. 'Cause I'm, I'm wondering if there's a win-win here that we can, that we can, can come up with. And that is, you know, what, what about, there are some really specific measurable deliverables in part, in part, hang on one second, in, in their proposal, in A and B1. And so, these include things like home hardening assessments, and, and retrofit rebate program development, home ignition zone assessments, defensible space. I mean, these are things that, that we act, that we said, as Sudip said, these are things that we actually discussed in our, in our plans. What if, what if we had the Fire Safe Council come back with a, with a modified proposal that covers 1A and B, B1? And we brought back to council a list of things like sirens, budget numbers for things like sirens, what I'm trying to remember, what else, sirens, communication technology. You know, what if, what if we, some of the other things that we discussed that we wanted to have, what if we have an overall, if we accept, if we have an overall budget discussion where we fine-tune how mu, how much we want to spend on, on those technol, on that technol, and sirens? And, and, go ahead, you have...
So, it sounds like you're, you're suggesting a list of items that you would like to have achieved, and then an estimate for each one of those items.
Yes.
And then possibly the council could match up some of those with, with the Fire Safe Council or other...
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we have, we ask the Fire Safe Council to come back with a modified proposal that, that covers part A and part B1. Some of the other things on the, on this proposal are things that we're not ready for yet. We're not ready to make a decision on yet, including the grant writing. And because, we're not ready because the, we're looking at hiring a grant writer, for example. But, but, but accepting, I would like to move forward as soon as possible with some of the things on this, on this proposal. And I also want a bigger conversation about what other expenditures we, we want to take on and, this year, and then also looking at this as a multi-year plan.
So, if I could just chime in here for the moment. You know, that, to me, is, I would support that if no one is gonna vote to go for the full proposal. I believe a more prudent way to do this is to approve the proposal, start with the things that are startable now, and get the city ready to do the other things that, you know, we need, we need the city to be able to do, which is, you know, for instance, and we talked about this, assisting and coordinating with the City of Ojai on planning and policy. We need to get our, our own ducks in a row to be able to do that. So, it, it's those kinds of things. But I, I see that as all sort of something that emerges. And I, I think that the analogy with building a house and handing somebody money, I mean, they mapped every one of their, of their suggestions to our goals. And, and it's there. And I think nothing was more telling than when it was said, we were paying attention. We were paying attention. And, you know, as far as other organizations, we can speak about that, but they have no, they don't have the capacity to do any of this. They have given letters of support on this proposal. They will be the subcontractors. There's been no... There's been no speaking that I have heard about double dipping. Um, so I, I just, I feel like the community has said to us, move forward with this enough. And I feel like the solution to that is do what is doable now, which is A through B1, accept the proposal. Look like we're moving forward, for heaven's sakes. Um, accept the proposal and then start working with them to figure out what the less defined things actually look like, because that's something that's going to emerge anyway in deliberation with the city. That is one of the instances where, yes, we just don't say to the Fire Safe Council, or the Fire Safe Council's not gonna come to us and say what the webpage looks like, or what this, you know, what this looks like. That is when we get into, you know, a conversation about what something looks like. But as far as the fire hardening and the ability to put all of that in movement now, they can do that. They have said they can do that, their partners have said they can do that. The only organizations that work in the Ojai Valley in this field are the crew, whose main vision and purpose and mission is employment development for kids between 18 and 24. They choose to use fire hardening to do that, but that is not their mission. So let's be really clear about that and let's also be clear, we don't know what their capacity is. I've looked at their website, it looks like their capacity is somewhere between 25 and 30 kids, but I'm not sure. I also talked to them, many of their kids come from outside the valley, which means that they have to be, they have to be driven in.
But they, they supported this proposal.
They supported this proposal, right? So all of this stuff about, you know, they, we didn't, we didn't reach out to them. They have $200,000 worth of grants coming from the Fire Safe Council. So there's the crew, then there's a one-man show who is fuel hardening. Great, he cuts trees, great, we need that, but he's not gonna run a program. I mean, he's gonna show up with five guys who cut trees. Um, and that's the game, besides the Land Conservancy, who look at their property and are, you know, I mean, they're rewilding for homes and that's great, but essentially they have a huge amount of property that they're responsible for and that they really are the shepherds for. Um, so there is nobody else, right? I mean, uh.
Can I, can I maybe just make one suggestion, but, and I want to hear from my other colleagues. Um, it seemed to me, last time when we were here, we came up with this 90-day, you know, review and I think that's an, I'm happy to keep that, I think it's a good idea. Secondly, I heard, if I heard the Fire Safe Council correctly say, if we come together as a body and, and their ideas emerge, they're open to hearing that and they're open to if something is added or, or whatever, we can, we can look at that. But anyway, I wonder, I don't know if continuing with the 90 days for a really systematic review of A and B or whatever makes sense. But let me hear from you guys.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
The 90-day provision was problematic for the Fire Safe Council.
Yes.
Um, that was, they communicated that they need to hire a significant amount of staff to be able to implement this contract. So anything, and they communicated at the beginning of this evening that they withdrew their proposal unless it was accepted in whole.
Okay.
I would recommend, because of the way that it went.
No, excuse me.
Isn't that, I'm sorry, isn't that the letter that Randy read into the record?
Well, I think it was, it was part, if it was in pieces.
And, and I, as I understand it, it was every 90 days, which wasn't our agreement at all, what, what the council instructed.
Just the first 90.
Was just, it was just 90 days, it wasn't every other, every 90 days, correct?
Yeah, it was, there was an initial 90-day period and review. Fire Safe Council made it very clear that they were unable to adjust the contract to meet a 90-day review.
That's not what I understood them saying.
I, I have emails, I'm sorry, if I could ask, sure, they can come for, like, Mayor, you're more than welcome. The, the email exchange that I had with them is that that was not possible, they were well, not willing to agree to it because they had to hire staff.
I just.
I'm, I'm telling you what happened in negotiations, so whatever it is, I recommend that you confirm with them before you leave this meeting that they're okay with it, because what happened was, when we tried to implement your direction, they were not agreeable to it.
Okay, I, I think what they understood was it was every 90 days and that might have been a disconnect.
Well, they're here and I'm hearing you shake your head when, if we say there's so, there's a review, I'm seeing you say yes. Am I seeing that?
Yeah.
In the briefest, in the briefest way, please, just 'cause it's getting late. Thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll be as brief as possible.
Thank you.
So, with respect to the 90-day review, what, what we said was, that could be a challenge for us because we are looking to do the program for an entire year. But we were willing to accept that as long as it was not a, a general review. We wanted to have a specific set and I, and I think you'll remember from the, from the letter that we sent, we said, here are the things that we can accomplish in 90 days. We're happy to be measured on those things. If we can put a checkbox in each one of the, next to each one of those things, we're happy to, to do that. We just don't want a subjective ru, review. We, we want to be able to know, if, if we do these things in the first 90 days, are we okay? Are we good? Let's, let's proceed. Um, and so, we're okay with that.
Thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Is that clear?
Yes.
I just, whatever you propose, I just would confirm with them before we leave.
No, thanks, fair enough.
Yes, and what about, uh, is there a way to, I mean, uh, the, can you speak to the A and B1, uh, and moving forward? And, and what I'm saying is, moving forward those, a new proposal, moving forward with those now and, and having, and, and then the council needs to have a, a bigger, broader discussion. So I'm not saying that we wouldn't do the rest of those, what I'm saying is,
Understood.
Let's commit to those and then the council has a, a di, a, a broader discussion about fire in general.
Right, so, so I think we've communicated clearly enough and enough times that the proposal that we put together for you, uh, was, was designed as a synergistic, uh, proposal that, where all the, the pieces and parts interact with one another and there were a lot of efficiencies in there, we were going for capital efficiency. And so, what we said was that if we were to pull it apart and, and do only pieces of it, we'd have to go back to the drawing board, go back to the spreadsheet to figure out what the cost would be. So it's not the, the, the costing sheet that we gave you, it, it's, we can't use it like a, like a menu.
We got it.
Uh, we want these things, we want those things for, for, for this price. The, the, the prices of things will change because the efficiencies are lost if we pull pieces out. That being said, we're more than happy, if, if, if we have a clear communication about what it is you want to see, uh, then we will resubmit a proposal with that in it.
May, may I offer though, I, this actually goes to Mr. Whitman's point. B2, Fuel Reduction Implementation Plan, I'm also feeling is really important. And if, if you were suggesting that since the grants are there, that, that falls into B2, I would not want to let go of B2, 'cause it seems as critical as B1.
What I, what I'm saying is that, that, that organizations that are doing fuel reduction are in the process of CAL, of writing CAL FIRE grants and receiving CAL FIRE grants. So there's already money coming into the, to the valley for those efforts. And, uh, and, and I don't, I think it, it could be, uh, it would be overlapping with what's already being done and not only that, I, I think I'd like to revisit that after the CAL FIRE grants have been administered and we know exactly what's happening. So just to have more, to have more research.
Can I ask who, who's, because I'm hearing like from Persimmon Hill, for example, their project.
Yeah.
Who's administering this, the equivalent of B2 that's not here right now?
Well, the Land Conservancy just received a $7.9 million CAL FIRE grant.
Okay.
Um, there is the, the Fuel Reduction Works, the Crew, there are other organizations that have, that are already being funded and that, that aren't asking for city funds to, to fund those efforts, but they're already, there's already money coming in here and I'm not saying that we want to, I'm not saying that we don't want to fund this. What I'm saying is, let's pause this and come and revisit it when we know how much is coming into the valley.
Because could I, could I make, okay, um, I'm just gonna read this to make it, um, you know, that we, um, let me see, approve a wildfire preparedness of funding policy that establishes an annual spending cap of, say, $200,000 and allows for no funding during years the city is experiencing financial difficulties. Or, um, if a council majority decides that there hasn't been a proposal submitted that they support. Um, council can direct city staff to put out an RFP that initiates qualifying 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations to submit for funding project proposals that include detailed cost accounting that are subject to return to council. The council majority would choose only one project proposal that proffers the greatest efficiency in achieving one or more of the following goals within city limits. One, harden prop, um, properties to resist ember caused ignitions. Number two, minimize project generated climate changing emissions. Three, permanently eradicate non-native invasive ember cast producing trees or grasses from properties. Number four, prioritize removal of combustible materials in the 0 to 5-foot zone around habitable structures and where needed, install ember resistant screens over attic and crawl space vents. Number five, prioritize scheduling of project work at locations that serve disadvantaged or vulnerable households, ahead of households that do, that do not qualify in either of the two aforementioned categories and establish a citywide fail-safe fire warning siren system that operates under all circumstances, including times which there is no grid power or internet service.
I like all those ideas, I, I'm not sure one vendor's gonna do all of them.
And some of those are in, some of those are in part B1 and.
Yeah, I think the idea is that, um, send out the RFP and everybody in the universe can apply and if it turns out that Fire Safe Council is the only entity that could possibly perform the things that we're proposing, then I would say they're gonna get the grant. But other people may decide to approach that process, you know, that particular issue differently and we get the benefit of seeing what other entities might propose.
I wish they would have proposed that.
I, I think I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make the, a motion that we, uh, that we invite the Fire Safe Council to revise the proposal and come back with a, with one that includes part A and B1 and that we set out an RFP for fuel reduction, opening it up to other, to other organizations who might want to, but, that, and it might be you. So I'm not saying, I'm not saying, don't apply, I'm saying, let's open up an RFP for that part of things. We know that what you, that what you do with education is unlike anybody else in this community. We know that what you do with, uh, you know, the, the home ass, uh, hardening assessments is really unique, you're, no one else is doing that. Professional training, a lot of these things are, are great services that you provide. And I, I would like to, to see another proposal moving forward with that. And then set out an RFP for fuel reduction in, uh, in the, in the, uh, for fuel reduction specifically in the city, looking at the area behind Libby Bowl, looking at all the area Brian mentioned today, all around City Hall and, uh, and, and that we prioritize those, uh, those places. Um, and then I would also add to my motion that we ask staff to come back with, uh, a budget, uh, with, with estimates for sirens and alert systems and a concept review of communication devices that are, communicate tech, communication technology, or not, uh, options for communication technology for us to be able to better communicate with the residents. Um, I, I've researched some of these that, you know, they have like, where people can, that's, you can, uh, hook into satellite systems and everyone can get notifications on their phones.
If I just, I, I see you listing a whole bunch of things to get a budget on, but it seems like that would come from our goals that we would have vetted that together for a budget item. I'm not saying I'm opposed to that, but.
That's part, that's part, that, that, these go into, these are part of that goal.
The, I, I didn't remember the communication device, I guess.
And, and I guess some of the things that can.
Then, then just the C, then, then forget about the communication, but just the sirens.
Yeah, yeah, they're there.
Yeah.
Because wouldn't it be better to, if we implemented, because they've said more than once that they can't create, you can't pick and choose from their proposal.
Assumited.
It's estimated, so would it be better if we like went more with something what I proposed? And then they can fill in, you know what I mean, if there's their strengths that they want to put their name in the hat to do it and then we can.
I, I would say, I would say yes, but I would like to go forward as soon as possible with some of the, with the parts of the proposal that, uh, and this is why I would like another proposal and, you know, I want, I want to, I, for some of the, the aspects of this proposal that I would like to, that I think would be important to move forward with faster.
If, if I may comment?
Yeah.
The, the CWPP is a definitive document that, that tells us what we ought to be doing. Like, all the experts have told us what we should be doing for wildfire safety. The proposal that we wrote was pulled directly from the CWPP and everything that is on the menu of, of things that we've proposed is in your list of things that you want done, so, so we're addressing those things very directly. If you would like us to do just a portion of that, as, as I've said, just to be clear again, we're happy to go back to the spreadsheet, figure out what that will cost. Just give us something in writing that shows us, this is what we want from you and we'll go back and, and we can do that in a matter of days and come back to you with a number and, and we should be able to proceed.
So can you say that we are actually, uh, do this? Oh, I'm sorry, my bad. Um, we're actually looking at, I mean, I'd like to be specific, that we're looking at A through, A through B1.
A through?
A through B1.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, because that's here, that's mo, we can move on that without a back and forth and, you know, a whole process. We've gone through that. I am sorry, we're not moving forward with the whole, um, proposal, but we're gonna come out with additional things that the council believes and if you're not able to find efficiencies, um, maybe we come back with the second part of the proposal and you say, well, if you take us, we're gonna give you the original deal, you know, and we might say, okay.
We'll see about that.
Yeah, we'll see about that, right?
We're all ears when it comes to that.
I'm hearing you say though, you're, you, you are willing to go back and come back with a proposal for A and B1.
As, as long as you clarify for us in writing what it is you want, e- even if it's just that, then we will go, go back to the drawing board and I think Chris Danch has something he really wants to share. Would you be willing to listen?
Thank you, just to, uh, as a proponent of understanding and clarity, the second part of B is not a fuel reduction project. It's very different from that, because there are thousands of acres and thousands of trees to, to, to tend to, right? That are millions of dollars to get that done. And there is a lot of competition throughout this county, throughout the state and throughout the West, as we both do federal and state, uh, co, uh, competition for these dollars. What that is, is outlined in, outlined in the proposal, is that funders want to see you've done your homework and understanding what you are going to do and why these dollars make a difference in fuel reduction. So we per, we have prepared and we're actually refining those, but we need additional funding to do that. We're refining these risk maps that contain much more detail than the CAL FIRE maps do, which lack the granularity necessary to actually plan effectively. And then you have these risk maps that are tied to specific project areas. So, in our CAL FIRE grant that we're working on now, which is almost a million dollars in fuel reduction, by the way, okay? Those are identified through our risk mapping. The ones we're applying for now, and we too apply for CAL FIRE, okay? That's how we get. That's how we get some of our money. And we work together often with the collaborative, which has raised eight million dollars together, the Ventura County Wildlife Collaborative. And you've heard from some of those people today. The point being is that we, the one we're doing now is we're taking a look at that phase that started with Persimmon Hill and other places. And, and we also tie that with ignition histories, by the way, which is on our dashboard. Look where these fires start. They don't start in town. They start out there. Getting them in here, whether it be a direct flame coming up the fire corridors or ember casts is what we're looking at. Strategically, the fuel reductions are in those fire corridors that lead to here and to the forest, which then come back as ember cast. So it's not just cutting things down here and there. Not should, not saying you shouldn't do that, but strategically for dollars spent that cost a, that are a lot of money. You take a hard look at where fires go, where they start, how they behave, which we do. That's incorporated in this risk mapping. The CAL FIRE grant we're putting in next week identifies areas that were hyper local data about where we are in those areas and outline those maps. That's what we go after the CAL FIRE. We show them, this is what we've done, this is what we've analyzed, and that's how we get the money we get. In one way, I just want to be clear that, that B two is not fuel reduction. It's how to get severally projects for the next, every year going forward. How do we get this kind of funding in a highly competitive environment?
So it's a plan, basically. It's your plan. I'm trying to.
It's a, it's a plan, but it is a tool to have in, in highly competitive. They're looking more and more for shovel-ready projects that you can just pull out. You've got your landowner agreements. So when you start identifying these things, which go, have to go every year, then you, then you're ready to go. So what we've talked about is having three to five shovel-ready projects as a demonstration of this tool. But some additional money to refine that tool. That's what B two is about. Okay? It's not a fuel reduction project. It's so that we can get the millions of dollars going here on forward to continue to do the kind of fuel reductions that we need. That's what it's about.
Thank you. This is going on too long, so super fast.
I, I just want to respond to Taylor because I was one that was communicating with her.
I think that we've resolved that.
I think we're okay.
And we, I think we're good. We were able to get clarity.
Okay, so it wasn't that we objected to the 90 day, we objected to a 90 day and subsequent 90 day.
We got it. We're good. Thank you, sir.
I just, so it's fine, we're going to follow any direction obviously that you provide, but I just want to point out that if we are going with everything in A through B one, I do want to remind you that some of these items require the city to do something, right? So for example, tool lending program, assist the city in developing a tool lending program where residents can borrow tools. Okay, that's a great idea. It's awesome, but you know, we, you, I don't, I don't have a resource to do that. I mean, you, it's going to require you buying some tools that you can, can lend, which we could do. You're going to need, you're going to need funding for that and somebody to do that. The other thing I want to point out, so a dedicated webpage on the city's website. Okay, sure. It's also good, but I mean, we would, I don't have somebody to develop that page. We, we, we could pay somebody to do that. They're, they're offering to collaborate with us on that. But I just, I just want to point that out.
That's, all of these things are requiring a collaboration.
Well, and, and that's what I'm saying. So, okay, so you don't, okay, I'll be, be more blunt. You don't have a collaborator. I, I'm, I'm here. I don't have somebody that I can immediately assign to that. That's all I'm saying. On a lot of these things.
I mean, do we have, we, we do have a, a media company that we work with.
You can pay them to do that.
We would have to approve payment for that, but.
Right. I just, I just, and that's, it's, it's all doable. I just want to say that you just, you have to have your eyes wide open on some of these things. You need to make some investments and you could do that. I just want to point that out to you.
I would just say.
Because I'm going to be held accountable on these and I don't want to, to fail you if I don't have some of the resources that I need.
Can I just say, wouldn't this be true of any vendor for all of these projects? It's not particular to the Fire Safe.
Well, I would quibble with, with you because if you're, if you're, if you're getting a proposal to do something, I wouldn't normally get a proposal where I have to do something. That's why I'm getting the proposal.
I get what you're saying. But if, if, for me, if it's, if we know that there's going to be some goal at some point to say, the city is going to become a communication hub, which we have discussed at some length. I mean, I'm looking at the one that they offered as an example, the Malibu. It, it would, it, it's pretty simple to build into our website. It's not like a big thing.
I'm not saying it's a big thing, I'm just who's going to do it.
No, I hear what you're saying, but my point is going to be that I don't, on, on this work, especially about coordinating properties and things like that, I can't imagine that somebody's going to do it apart from us.
But again, you know, I'm just going to, again, I'm going to quibble some more. Like I don't immediately have somebody that I can throw at all of this. I don't.
We understand, not immediately. We can get somebody.
Okay. I just want to make it clear that we just don't have somebody to immediately throw at.
So are you recommending that we?
We can do this. So just, so a logical thing might be when we eventually hire an assistant to the city manager, this might be something that that person can take on. We just need somebody to serve as point on, on all these. I just don't have somebody immediately for that.
But if we went back to like what I proposed, if it went out for RFPs and all that, we could get a list of these things, you know, that we're saying, you know, make a, a sheet of what we need and the money, you know, for what is it, the, the 482,000? It said, you know, it's proposed project covers, you know, services of in-house staff. Well, we would, you know, we would save money if we did it out for an RFP. The people that would do it, we wouldn't have to pay for staff and all of that.
We'd have to pay them though. We have to pay them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go, I'm going to go back to my. I'm going to go back to my motion.
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, I'm going to go back to my, I'm going to go back to my motion and that is to have the Fire Safe Council come back with, uh, with a proposal for part A, which is community outreach and education. Minus eight, tool lending program.
That was the Leslie Memorial.
Well, because of the city. I mean, that's something that could volunteer, that could be a volunteer effort, but like to our city manager's point. Um, and, uh, and that we send out an RFP for just fuel reduction. And I, I won't limit it. And that we have, uh, that we bring back as soon as possible, uh, a fire budget conversation.
I just want to say, when you say, we, can we send out an RFP for fuel reduction? That, that has to have some kind of a scope, like location. How, where, where are they going to go out to do that? Is it public or private? Um, so I mean, that's not enough direction.
Then, okay, then I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to clarify around city on, uh, around city properties.
Okay.
So Libby, around Libby Park and City Hall.
That's, that's, yeah. Let's start.
I, I would like to resurrect the tool lending program, if possible. Um, I can take that on. I can work with public works. Oh.
Could you say it one more time? Hold on one second, Mr. Whitman. Just say it one more time.
Yes, you have a second. You have a second.
My, one more time.
Okay, just so we're clear.
It's to have the Fire Safe Council come back with a proposal for, uh, the items on, uh, part A of their proposal and B one that we send out an RFP for, for fuel removal in around city properties, so around City Hall, the City Hall campus and behind Libby Bowl.
Okay.
And that we come back as, as, at the next meeting as possible to have fire as an overall, like to have a, a, an in-depth conversation around budgeting every year for fire. And, uh, and, and having fire, uh, yeah, budget, around budgeting every year for fire re, uh, prevention and mitigation.
And you're seconding that?
I am seconding that. And, and I just wanted to just point out to Kim that I think part of what you have, um, listed and your process is part of what is the next step. You know, is looking at all of these things and deciding what goes out for RFP and deciding, you know, what the limits are to the, to the costs that we're willing to do. I personally, you know, I, I'm at way more than 200,000, but let's have a discussion on it for sure.
Mayor, so. May I ask Mayor Protem a question? Would you like to keep the siren and alert system services as part of the budget estimates?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, just siren, just siren.
All right. So before we vote, I, I did have a few things that I wanted to add as future agenda items.
Well, I was going to ask about that because can we ask, can we get future agenda items on a special session? Because I had things I was going to bring up, but not today.
Mine only relate to.
Oh, this.
Fire hardening.
So if, if, is, okay.
I'm thinking that's a different meeting.
We don't have it on the calendar.
Because we have Kim's, we have Kim's whole list and process. Um, I mean, there's an integration. We can certainly put that list together.
All of these relate to and potentially influence.
Sure.
Voting.
Okay.
So I want a legal, uh, report analysis on the state law concerning the principal's base and zero zone.
Can I just interrupt? I'm sorry, really quick. So just, I'm sorry to be a jerk about this. So I must, is this part of a motion that's being proposed?
Well, yeah, I guess.
Cause I see, I see, I see only, I see only one path forward. So because we don't have future agenda items on this agenda, we cannot take that on. However, council can provide direction. I think the way that direction should be provided, any of you can, can put together a motion and passes, you can give us that direction.
Related to this agenda, you have to keep it within the scope of this.
So I'm going to ask for a friendly amendment to add these things. Yeah, but they're all in the nature of, of, of future items. First, um, resuscitate the disaster council.
Yes.
Which, um, we adopted in 1973, but it hasn't met since 2023. And it's designed to address what we do when the emergency happens. And, and it, uh, so, and we need to review the emergency plan, which I think is about 12 years old. Um, or at least the disaster council needs to review the emergency plan.
Council member, I, I hate to be this person, but I think we're getting quite far away from what this. No, it's just the proximity to what we're supposed to be talking about tonight. I think it would be better to bring it back at the next meeting.
I thought we were in a hurry to do fire stuff.
We are, but, uh, I also like it when the DA isn't mad at us for brown act violations. So.
Well, okay, so that, maybe, maybe that one's a little bit off, but, but the rest of these are very much.
How many are there?
So it's.
There's about five.
So what we have.
That sounds like too big of an amendment.
No, so it, it's not the amendment part. It's that your options tonight are further refine the proposal and create a committee or develop a list of desired fire hardening, wildfire safety and risk, risk mitigation services. So Mayor Protem, the sphere of things that she's proposed this evening stay within the sphere. I think that your items are related.
So in the future, I shouldn't surrender after five minutes? Because someone may make a motion and then I never get to speak again. Is that the lesson learned today?
I'm saying that what you're talking about is not directly related. It's related to fire hardening, but it's not related to this item.
I, I like a lot of the items you're saying. They just don't seem like they make sense as an amendment here today.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say, where like we can bring them back at another item or we can help you bring to council member requests. Like I think we have more options. I just think tonight isn't the night for this discussion.
I, I think what you're saying is it's too large a stretch for the actual item that we are discussing.
That is what I'm trying to say.
That is your legal opinion. It is too far a stretch.
And you are welcome to trash or treasure, as we like to say, but I don't, I don't recommend continuing on this path.
I do have one, one possible. So we have been going through our goals and we do have it for next week. I'm thrilled to bring back, I, I know we, we are now on six and seven. If we want to add these pieces to the fire mitigation, I think that's wonderful.
That's an excellent, okay, thank you. That's an excellent solution. Next week we are talking goals and I would, and I think, I feel very comfortable that you've got nine identified goals and all of these fit within probably at least one or two of the categories, for sure.
We also.
It's a really broad subject matter, you know, fire risk and, and tonight we've talked about, you know, a small thing. We got it. We have a lot of stuff we need to consider.
Another solution, we have not finished, we are wrapping up the agenda for next meeting. If Ben is open to it, we can add an item for council members to add agenda items at that meeting as well.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's, that's fine. I, I just, I just think that every single thing he's talking about could neatly fit in the goal's discussion without having to.
I agree, I agree.
I'll do, I'll do it since I don't have to wait till August 12th.
No.
Just next Tuesday, just Tuesday.
Next week.
No, I, I feel very comfortable.
So we've got the motion in the.
And actually things, sorry to keep talking about, other things you guys have mentioned, you could, you don't have to stick on just the goals that you haven't narrowed down on. You can expand on any.
Yeah.
Can we please get clarity about number eight, A eight? Because there was discussion on it, came up, we had the second, and the conversation moved on. And Wes, the.
Yes, clarity on tool lending, please.
Well, I think we're, sorry, what I heard and, and I heard that we're requesting a revised proposal from the Ohio Valley Fire Safe Council for A through B one. Is that correct?
Okay.
So they could, they've heard the council discussion tonight and concerns from staff. They could tighten those up in a revised proposal, correct?
Absolutely.
Would you feel that's with the spirit of what you're?
Yeah. I, I will leave it up to their discretion.
Okay.
Stink eye your way.
That solves it.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And then we have an RFP for fuel removal.
On city property.
Right, especially City Hall campus and, and the Libby Bowl, but city property. And then we want to return with a fire budget discussion, uh, focusing on prevention and mitigation as part of that, including an estimate for community sirens.
Which we're, we were going to do that anyway.
Okay, so you, and this all wants to come back at like the, the 12th probably, first meeting in August? Okay, then we can do that.
You can?
I think so.
Yeah, and I want to really thank the Fire Safe Council. Thank you and thank you all for who came out tonight. We, I really hope that you hear that, that there's a desire to work with you.
Okay, let's do it.
Is it, wait, is the city clerk comfortable with everything? We just, okay, you're good with that? You feel you have a good record of this? Okay, just, sorry. City attorney, we.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Motion understood. Roll call. Councilmember rule.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lang, excuse me. Councilmember Meng.
No.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay.
All right, Ted.
All right.
Meeting adjourned.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Okay.